Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board on Tuesday, December 21st. And this evening, we are covering the following items. We'll have community input at 7:00 or as soon as I'm done reviewing the agenda. And I'll be offering the update from the LEPC Committee. At 7:10, we are going to have a public comment session for those of you that are interested in discussing the pickleball proposal from the Recreation Commission. 7:45, just a brief update on our providing health insurance to surviving spouses, followed by a check-in about the Select Board goals. And then we're going to have actually the discussion of municipal land since Nathan is not here. I think we will take that off the agenda for tonight because he was going to lead that conversation. Then we'll have a discussion about the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator Positions and how we move forward, appointments and resignations after that, the Town Administrator's Report. At 9:30, we'll have Liaison Reports. And then finally, we close with the Approval of Minutes and Warrant Report. So let me go back then and say that on community input, we welcome comments from both those that are with us remotely and those that are here in person. This portion of the agenda, community input, is for those that have comments they'd like to make before the Select Board that do not have anything to do with the pickleball proposal because we have scheduled that as its own session at 7:10. So my question is if there is there anyone here that would like to offer input to the Select Board regarding any other topic? And if you are here in person and would like to make a comment, you can come up, you should come up to the mic and introduce yourself and say where you live. Or if you're online, if you're joining us via Zoom, if you could indicate by raising your hand or putting up the symbol on the bottom, you can raise your hand with a symbol or Tim, can you see the?
There were four people on, but nobody is.
Nobody's indicating they would like to make a comment. Okay. Well, then I'm going to move on and offer the LEPC Report. Chief Fisher is otherwise occupied tonight. Normally, he would be here. We, as many of you know, we meet on the Monday prior to every Select Board meeting. And I'll just give you a quick update on the what the Board of Health had to say about COVID cases in town. In November, we had 24 new cases. By December 17th, for the month of December, we had 20 new cases. And Linda Fantasia, our Board of Health agent, ensured us that none of those have been severe illnesses, no one's been required to go to the hospital. But nevertheless, we're seeing what's happening across the state with an increase in COVID cases. The Board of Health completed their fourth clinic with folks in Concord and provided second shots for the initial vaccines for children five to 12. There were 800 children at the last booster clinic. And the Board of Health is also requesting that the state allow them to host either a regional clinic here in Carlisle or our own independent clinic here in Carlisle that would be staffed by the entity that did the vaccinations in Concord for the children. And we're waiting to hear back about that. The other thing is that the Board of Health met last week and there's no change in the Carlisle, the mask mandate for here in Carlisle for indoor public places. The Fire Department reported that there's a significant increase in people requesting to be tested for COVID. And they have a very efficient, effective system right next door to us at the fire station for handling that. And we really appreciate that service that they're providing to everybody in town. The Council on Aging is continuing to provide lots of important services to older folks in town. They've had a number of requests for fuel assistance, provided holiday bags, and they're providing gift cards to those who need some support in terms of food. And the Neighborhood Response Team is continuing to provide support to some of families in town that need help in terms of grocery shopping. And we are also, both the COA and the Neighborhood Response Team are providing some support to the new Afghani family that's here in town. The Carlisle Public Schools reported that it's been fairly quiet. They continue to do contact tracing. They continue to provide this test and stay option. And things seem to be going well at the school. And that is all from the LEPC meeting. So let me open up the third item on our agenda, which is the public comment session regarding the Recreation Commission's pickleball proposal that they presented to us at our last meeting. And so I want to just set the framework for this tonight that so this is an opportunity for people here in town to give their input, to ask questions. We will do our very best to answer the questions. And if we can't, you know, if we need to find out more from the Recreation Commission and don't have anybody on the call that can help provide answers or something else that we can't answer, we will definitely be keeping track of those questions and provide answers at our next meeting because we will have another public comment session on our first Select Board meeting in January, which is Tuesday, January 11th at the same time. And anyone is welcome to return or certainly spread the word, encourage others to come and make their voices heard. I'd like to just make a general comment that, you know, we know that there are lots of different feelings about this proposal. And I just urge all of us to remember that it's really important that we try to listen to one another and that it's very important to try to be respectful. And, you know, as we have done as a community for, you know, many, many years, we will try to work out what's best for the town overall. So with that, I would open it up for comments from either people here in the room or anyone online. And again, if you are in the room, if you just come up so people can hear you and speak into the microphone, either here at the chair or up at the podium and say who you are and what street you live on, or if you'd like to make a comment and you're on the Zoom call, please indicate by waving your hand or using the symbol at the bottom of your screen to put a hand up and we'll make sure that we recognize you. With that, I'll open it up for comments. Who wants to be the brave soul to go first?
Just wanted to point out that Ethan Dively from the Town Council's office is on the call as well.
Yes, thank you, Tim. Yeah. Ethan, thank you for joining us. So Ethan is from the firm that represents us, our council, Town Council Firm. Thank you, Ethan.
Good evening, everybody.
Well, come on up if you'd like to begin, sure.
My name is Arthur Levine. I live on Witchfield Drive. And all I want to say, I've been in town for 40 years, just about. And although longevity does not get any understanding, over the course of that, I've heard so many conversations about the needs in the town, things like a youth center and a rec center, senior center. And so often, or almost always, it does always come down to affordability. It's what we can't afford in the town. And I applaud the work that the people on the Rec Commission have done up to this point in trying to introduce the pickleball facility, the funding associated with it. And I think, given the need for recreational facilities, given the opportunity to use a facility like that in addition for pickleball, the other functions, given the fact that it's going to be paid for and apparently self-funding based on the research, I think it's a great opportunity for the town. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levine. Gosh, I thought this was going to be kind of, you know, who could get their hand up the fastest? Hi, come on up, please.
My name is Jase Tilton. I'm at 400 Concord Street. My background is 50 years as a geriatric care manager. I'm a nurse L I C S W and I did advanced. I've been in Carlisle since 1987. I've been on two committees to study senior center versus community center and over the years, way back to Tom Dunker and Al Hamlin and lots of people that have passed away since then. I too think the pickleball offer is very good, very nice, but I have a big but because I really feel that there are many more needs for our seniors in this town than can be met by just the pickleball facility, no matter how big it is. I've been away in Texas for five weeks, so I've been a little bit out of touch. I've tried to even include on everything, but I'm concerned about the size of a community center, if we should share the land to put it up. I think I saw 6,000.
For the pickleball facility?
No, for a community center. I mean, when they were thinking about, they were talking about maybe doing both. But anyway, I just feel that there's so much to look at, so much has been studied in the past. And we have almost 30% of the town now, 60 and over. We've been very supportive of the schools and we've always continued to do that. And I just feel it's really, we really need to look at getting a community center there and then, and maybe pickleball. And I am so appreciative of the people that are putting this offer forward. I did write a letter to the editor. I think my third one in 30 years. And I also was part of the BD Center because I was chairman of Bellnap House and we gave $1.3 million to that for the home order therapy and some of the other things. So I'm well aware of the public partnerships that can be done. And I just, I just really liken my heart to see us do a community center and get it done because we can give all excuses in the world, we can re-study it. I mean, how many tens of thousands of dollars have we given on studying this over the years? So again, everybody wants to do what's best for the town. And I know that the Friends do, the COA does. I've been in the Friends on the board for many years and parent present. I've had my ear to the ground on that. So that's all. And I want to thank you all for your work and your patience, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, before the next person speaks, I'm getting texts that people are having, well, people are having trouble getting in on Zoom. So maybe we need to do a little problem solving before we go too far further because I'm worried that people are missing.
Yeah, I see another message up there that some Molly Springer is trying to join.
And Mark Levitan.
Several people, we'll see.
Yeah, that may be why yours was being so much as well. So what do you think, Tim?
Well, I've sent more than a dozen links out in the past few minutes that seem to be working.
So people are getting on?
People should email me.
Yeah, you should email.
If they want.
Okay. Well, hold on. So Tim, why don't you just say your name of your, say your email into the mic so people know if they're trying.
People who can hear on the mic are.
Well, they can't hear them, never mind, never mind, never mind, right.
Was this a changed link provided?
Provided in the agenda, says Mary Lynn Bone, did not work. Huh, okay. Well, maybe if somebody's contacting you, those of you on the Zoom call, could you text or write them, email them back to say that they should write directly to Tim Goddard at carlislema.gov, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So timgoddard@carlislema.gov. And you know what, why don't we do one of the other items on our agenda? Bear with me, those of you here in person, we'll just give five minutes for, for hopefully this to get.
Is the agenda link incorrect?
I don't know, that's just what's coming.
No, but I mean, if it is, we should talk to another example.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, we just have to go to.
Zoom's not a requirement for the agenda.
I know, but I think this item then needs to be tabled till next time.
Some people have gotten on, I don't know. Okay. Gosh, yeah, sorry about this.
Maybe we should move that chair out of the way, too.
Thanks, Mr. Levine. Yeah, that'd be great, just so.
Yeah, we should probably.
Stacy, people are only getting on if they, I can't see the rest of her chat.
It says if they know enough to email me and they don't email.
Ah, so they're not able to do it from the Zoom link? That is a problem, huh? Okay, well, hmm. I suppose we could take comments from the people that are here, both in person and online. And then those that can't get on, we could, you know, encourage them to come on the January 11th. Or if you think there's some, if we shouldn't do that.
We should do that.
The rest of the Select Board can help guide me here. We could also just not have this on the agenda tonight and wait and do it January 11th and then January 25th. I apologize to everybody that has made it onto the call. What do you think? David's saying yes on that one, but what do you think, Luke? They comment tonight and then encourage people to come on the 11th if they couldn't get in or not have this on the, skip this part of the agenda and wait and do January 11th and January 25th?
No, I mean, if people are here, why not let them come?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
We still need a second session, yes.
You might need a third, depends on the.
Okay.
You can play that.
And how about you, Kate?
That's fine.
You're fine with taking comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that then. And we'll extend our apologies to those that weren't able to make it on. So let's see, so we had somebody here in the audience. Why don't we have somebody who's online? I see Marcella Meyer is there, Madeline Blake, I see you, and Dan Bojanic. Any of you want to make a comment? Yes, Dan.
Yeah, hi there, everyone.
Introduce yourself and then your street.
Okay, Dan Bojanic, 93 Clarkson Farm Road. What I'd like to see is basically a full breakdown of the costs, an illustration of all the income and expenditure so that we can get a big picture idea of what this actually really costs. I haven't seen anything anywhere.
Okay. Yeah, because that's not in the grant proposal, is it? I think Drew, the RecCom does have some of that information, Luke?
Yeah, they have some, but I know, well.
Don't forget to speak in your language.
Yeah, no, they do have some. I don't, I haven't actually seen a full breakdown either. But yeah, I can, I'll talk to Drew and see what. I mean, part of it is that the donor is a builder, right, or a developer. So like they have an idea of what costs will be, right? But ultimately, yeah, no, I agree with, I agree with Dan. I mean, we should see some sort of breakdown.
Yeah, let's make.
A million and a half and a cost two, right? That doesn't make any sense.
Let's make this totally transparent so that people can actually put their queries in to that because we need, we need a real full breakdown. You know, we could, we can get a guesstimate, but I think the more people that can provide input, the better it'll be for everybody.
Yes, there's two, I would say there's two buckets of costs. To Dan's point, I think there, there's the construction costs and whether the grant covers how much it covers. But then the operating model has not been vetted by anybody other than RecCom. And then there's ongoing costs. So that needs to be examined by somebody who didn't put it together.
Yeah. So Luke Oskalila was our Select Board Liaison to the Recreation Commission. So thanks, Luke, for the follow-up. And hopefully, we can have something that we can get out to people in advance of that January 11th Select Board meeting. Thanks, Dan. Any other, anyone else in the audience? We'll, we'll go back and forth here. Hi, come on up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Can I speak through my mask? Esther Ratner from Carlisle Pine Drive. My questions have to do with, I'd like to know exactly why the project has been refused by other towns, which towns and exactly what the refusal was based on, whether it was cost or. And my other question has to do with parking, since there are six courts proposed. Four people usually play pickleball. I don't know how many people have driven through the center of town at certain hours, but it is, I find the traffic really heavy. So I'd like to have an idea of what the parking, how much more parking places are going to be constructed for this, not for a community center, that's Carlisle. But in, I read someplace that there's a maximum of 400 memberships for the pickleball club, 100 for Carlisle members, and 300 for out-of-town members. I don't want to sound like a Luddite, but we've lived in this town 47 years. We voted for the new school, the Fire Department, the new town offices and everything. But my generosity at this moment does not extend to 300 households outside of this town. So I would like, as Jean Bo was saying, I'd like to see what that cost would be for the extra parking.
Okay, thank you.
Marcella Meyer has her hand up.
Yeah. Hi, Marcella Meyer. Yeah, please.
Hello.
Introduce yourself and where you live, please.
Sure, Marcella Meyer. I live off Woodland Road. And I support the pickleball facility. My question is, is would the pickleball facility itself, when you build the structure, would the roads and the water and the sewer and those sorts of things possibly aid in the funds towards a future expansion for a community center?
Yeah, maybe Ethan, would you be able to respond to that? I don't know how familiar you are with the grant agreement. I know Tom was involved in drafting that, but, or I could take a stab at it, or Luke, possibly.
Sure, I might be able to comment, but could you repeat the question about specifically which, which funds you were asking about?
Well, so if you build this facility, you have to have water, electricity, utilities, those sorts of things for this facility to support it. So would putting those utilities in eventually benefit the addition of a community center that would also come in to join this? Would it curb some of the future cost of an additional community center?
Sure. I think at the moment, that's a bit outside the scope of the grant agreement, but I think certainly depending on the designs that get discussed and the future of this potential project, if, if the site can support both the pickleball facility and the community center, the fact that certain kinds of utilities are installed ahead of time for the pickleball facility and then could be used later for, for a community center would, would potentially curb some costs. But I think it's a little bit too hypothetical at this point to really comment on the magnitude of that.
Luke, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, that, should I keep a mask on? Yeah, so basically, just to kind of mirror what Ethan said, yeah. But, you know, part of it is that, that the whole idea is if this is going to be a joint parcel, right, that would have both, yeah, we would, you know, we, the town would think about that in advance. So obviously, if there's going to be an access road, right, that would only have to be paid for once. You know, one of the things that I've actually kind of pushed for is to tie into the wastewater treatment plant. You know, so there's a lot of stuff that still has to be determined, you know, whether it's cost-effective, whether it makes sense. So that's kind of, I think, where Ethan was coming from. But yeah, the mindset is that, you know, that, you know, we do the infrastructure once and you focus on, yeah, having the conduit for, you know, electrical for a future senior center or community center. And, you know, you have a tie-off or, you know, a runoff for if you do tie into the wastewater treatment plant, you know? So that would be, that would all be designed prior to the whole thing happening, yeah, because you don't want to start tearing up access roads and, you know, because you're short-sighted. So even when I initially walked the site way back when with Drew, you know, we were looking at how would we access it and all of that. And if, you know, if the pickleball facility goes here and a community center goes here, yeah, it would be, you know, I mean, for as much as we can say now, yeah, you know, the cost would be lessened if it does go on the same side, I guess, does that?
So yeah, so it would, doing the initial structure of the pickleball facility, having to put the road and some utilities and things like that would lessen the cost for future expansions?
Yeah, it should. Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's done right, right? I mean, and obviously, I think the, you know, by the sentiment of people in this room and, and what we've seen is that, you know, it would be a shared parcel, right? So you wouldn't go in and just design for one and not, not consider the other. You know, also, too, if we do get that extra funding, right, there was that potential for the extra funding. Yeah, 250,000. I mean, I think, you know, it only makes sense to leverage your funds as best you can, so.
So the other question is, has any other donor ever come forth to provide funds for a community center?
I don't know the answer to that one. You got to back away from the mic on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Tim, in your memory, has any other donor come forward before to donate to a community center?
Not that, that's a magnitude.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Has there, has there ever been any fundraising for a community center?
I don't.
I don't think so. I know it was on the, I mean.
You mean not allowed?
Vanessa, why don't you come on up and so people, everyone else can hear you and just again introduce yourself.
Hi, Vanessa Maroney Bedford Road. There, years ago, there was a request, I think, and Tim, I don't know if you remember this, to start a fund or to create a fund so that fundraising could be done, or create an account, I'm sorry, so that fundraising could be done. I talked to Jerry Lerman about this. Again, it was years ago and that, that didn't, wasn't deemed possible at that time, so no fundraising could actively be done at that point. But this, I don't know, this was like maybe 2016, 17, maybe.
Yeah, no, I think I remember, and I think the reason we didn't move forward with that is there wasn't clarity on what happens if it doesn't move forward, right? So you've got all these funds in a pot, right? And, and the facility doesn't move forward, we give the funds back. So I think that's why it ultimately didn't move forward, if I remember correctly. It's not to say that you can't do it, right? It was just that there's a lot of backend stuff that needs to be done because obviously, if it doesn't move forward, you can't really return the funds and you can't just keep them stale, right? So I think it's just, it's more of a process than we thought warranted at that time.
All righty, let's move on. I'm just conscious of the time and I want to let people, you know, other people have a chance to offer their comments. Yes, Vanessa, would you like to return? Okay.
Vanessa Maroney Bedford Road. This is about pickleball this time. So the, the general, well, first of all, I want to start by saying I have no strong feelings either way about the sport of pickleball. My, the way that I'm looking at this as a, is as a process. And I haven't been pleased with the process to, up to this point. And what I'd really like to see is, I'd like to see outreach done. I haven't seen outreach in the form of a survey or something, you know, I have, these information sessions are great, you know, RecCom held one, which was great. This is good, I know you have other ones planned, but I feel like there really needs to be a broad outreach by the means of a survey or something with the help of either the mosquito or, you know, RecCom has a very robust email list, something that gets the sense of all the citizens, as many citizens as possible, for, do people want this? I really feel like we don't know if people actually want this. So I think that's the first thing that I would like to see. So I think that's the first thing that I would like to see done. And I'd like to see that done particularly, I feel like it's important before any spending is done, whether it's for a feasibility study or, you know, site survey, any of that. And way before it even gets close to a warrant article. Because I really think that we need to be careful with, you know, even though I've heard, you know, RecCom has the money for this study, I kind of want to remind people that it's not RecCom's money. It's the town's money, it's the citizens' money, it's the taxpayers' money. And I really feel like that's something that is kind of pushed off or forgotten. But to really like, not just spend things because you, money because you can. So I feel like, you know, I've been reading, I only get all my news from the mosquito. I've been seeing that, you know, RecCom has, I think because this donor has very graciously and generously come forward with money to go toward a community center. I feel like we need to step back a little bit and remember all the work that was done by the steering committee for the community center years ago, and that there's so much institutional knowledge there, and RecCom shouldn't be driving the bus on this. I've kind of lost my confidence in the way that they handled the process to date. And so I'd really like to see that group, which was, had a broad spectrum of backgrounds. You know, it had, Board of Health was on it, RecCom was on it, you know, selectmen. And it just would be good to have a cohesive group look at the possible project of a community center. And I also wanted to remind people in general that in the spring of 2017, for the annual town meeting, that there was a warrant article which was defeated, which was to do a survey or a study for a community center on this specific property, on this, on the golf castle, as it was called then, and it was defeated. So I feel like, again, it kind of underscores the fact that, or my feelings, that we need to look at what the people want before this, before any money is spent and before it gets on the warrant. And lastly, I have a question about, in the, one of the articles that I read was about abutters. And it didn't, the article made it sound like there weren't a lot of close abutters. And I just wonder, you know, we have nine residents at the Till home, and I just wonder if there's been outreach there and what the feelings are for the people who are actually living on the property. So that's it.
Thank you. Do you have any idea, Luke, whether as part of their development that the RecCom reached out to the Till home, those living there?
I'm texting Drew now, asking that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't know if they will or won't reach me.
Okay. And as I said earlier, but I want to, in case people have joined us recently, we are, thank you to Jennifer Gibbons here. She's taking minutes and also noting various questions that come up that we have not answered, that we will make sure we get answers for and provide those at the next meeting. So somebody who is online... Yeah, Madeline, I see you there with you. And I also, Madeline, I have your, your comment at the last meeting about the contract and contingencies protecting the donor and not the town. So I don't know if that's where you're headed, but love to have you raise that question if that's what's on your mind.
Hi, everyone, I'm Madeline Blake, 127 Carlton Road. I'm also a co-chair of the planning board, but I need to emphasize, I'm just speaking for myself tonight. The planning board is planning to have a full discussion of this at our next meeting on January 10th, but we haven't done that yet or agreed what we will say collectively as a group. But one of the things that I need to do as chair is to try to determine what the process is here so that I can make sure I'm teeing it up for the planning board so that they have an appropriate and timely opportunity to discuss it. And I want to thank you for having these sessions and taking these questions. And apologies if this is my failure to kind of locate this information. I've been trying to attend the meetings and get up to speed on it. My understanding is that you are considering signing a contract, the grant agreement, sometime in January. And to me, it seems that there's still a disconnect in this process. When you spoke about this matter at your December 7th meeting, it sounded like your intent was, and from the RecCom presentation, that the decision here would actually be made by folks at town meeting. And to me, there's an inconsistency with signing a contract before that decision's made. A contract is generally considered to be something binding. This one has a representation that, that I think it says, "We're prepared to donate municipal land at the Mosley Land to build this facility." And I don't know how we could, as a town, represent that if it's not a true statement. And if I understand it correctly, your plan for obtaining town input is that there's going to be a warrant article about enterprise accounting. And I just, I still can't get my head around that, but it sounds like it's, the idea is that it'll be some sort of a proxy vote so that what we'll really be voting on is the land use question. But I guess we're going to talk about it in terms of accounting. And I just, I would like to suggest that that's not clear and transparent for the town. I mean, hard as it is for us to believe, we're here the week before the holidays, there's people in town who aren't going to be paying attention to this, and they're going to get their warrant book. And they might very well see a warrant that talks about enterprise accounting and think, "Oh, I'm not interested in that, I have nothing to add, I'm not going to go to that meeting." And it's just, it's not clear to me if the moderator could or would allow a discussion of a broader land use topic if what was on the warrant was accounting. And finally, I just would like to urge you to undertake a process where you solicit feedback from other boards in town. The Council on Aging seems to have been singled out to receive a presentation and to have their opinion asked. But there are other boards and committees in town that might have relevant information to the discussion. For myself, I'd like to hear from the Housing Committee if they've totally decided not to ever seek to put housing here again. What about the Public Facilities Committee? Have they written up this, this land for use for fire or police or public safety building? The Municipal Facilities Committee certainly would have relevant input to this. And the planning board, we, you know, we're a land use board. We've been heavily invested in long-range planning. And this contract that you're apparently considering signing has a paragraph 3A and 3B that specifically deals with site plan. Our preliminary read of that at our last meeting last week is that it appears to be inaccurate. So I'd really, you know, encourage future drafts of this, specifically stuff that has to do with site plan review. Bring us into the process. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Madeline. Ethan, I'm...
Before, before we move, oh, is it Ethan?
Yeah, he's representing town council.
The question, did we, I don't recall ever committing to sign it.
Oh, that we as a select board have said we would sign it? No, we haven't made that decision.
There's no...
No, but I think, but well, what I heard from Madeline was that she was saying we had said we would make a decision by the end of January on the grant agreement. And that if we signed it, she's saying, then, then her...
But we wouldn't. We would maybe make an agreement of the form that the form of it meets, or maybe that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, so Ethan, perhaps you could explain to us, in the grant agreement itself, what is, what is being asked of the select board to do when we're ready to do that?
Sure, sure. And I think these are, these are the right questions to be asking. So there is a paragraph in the draft grant agreement, and I think I'm looking at the most, most current version of it. It's paragraph four, which states that the award is made contingent on a certain list of approvals. And one of, one of these, item D says, "There will be a majority approval of the project plans and this grant agreement by the Town of Carlisle Select Board." So in, as it's drafted in its current form, that's ultimately the question that would be put to you all. Do you approve of the project plans when it's time to review them, as well as the grant agreement at the, at the time that it's appropriate to execute it?
Right, so, and we've seen the draft grant agreement, we have not seen project plans. Is that correct? What we're discussing, right, needing to see that as well.
We may not...
Go ahead.
Because a full feasibility study has, a full feasibility study has to be done, right? I mean, we have to determine if it actually makes sense to do it on that parcel, if it fits financially, right? So that's where, to Vanessa's point, where there's a risk if, if RecCom does move forward with that, right? We're using town funds, and if it doesn't move forward, then those are town funds that were spent on this, right? There is a piece in here, though, that we do get reimbursed for that if it does move forward. So, you know, there's, there's some contingencies that if the project moves forward, you know, we do get some funding back, right? But, but yeah, it needs certain approvals in order to move forward. And then at the end of the day, we can ultimately still say no, right? Right, so...
Maybe, to clarify, because obviously, Madeline has an impression, so others may as well. My understanding is, and Ethan, I think, was saying this, that the foundation, Steinberg, do not wish to progress it. There's a series of gates, and we're one of the gates. If we think it's not a good idea, it won't. If we think it's a good idea, it's by no means a signed deal. It just means we moved to that stage, is that... One of those gates is a site plan, another one is town meeting, I think RecCom approval, I don't know what other...
Well, we've got the gates right here in the grant agreement, which is...
Let's be real clear with everyone on what those gates are.
Can I just follow up? Are you saying that you're going to sign the contract after town meeting? That's when you, is that what you're saying?
Town meeting approval is required.
Remember, though, it's not a contract, it's a, it's a grant agreement. But the grant agreement says, "The award is contingent upon approval." So one is a majority vote of the Recreation Commission. The second one is final site plan approval by the planning board. If you say no, then it doesn't go anywhere. Third is a majority vote of the Carlisle School Committee approving access and/or development of the site, because they, you know, some of that is school property. A majority approval of the project plans and this grant agreement by the select board. A vote by town meeting, and this was what you were referring to, Madeline. It's not a vote on whether or not to, right now, the way this grant agreement is written, it doesn't have to be a vote in which the town approves having a pickleball facility in town. It's a, and I know it's kind of splitting hairs, but specifically, this grant agreement says it needs to be a vote, a majority vote of town meeting authorizing the establishment of an enterprise fund, which is the required, you know, financial vehicle for the management and maintenance of a pickleball facility in town. And the final approval, the contingency is that an opinion letter from town council indicating that all the approvals have been received and that are necessary for the development of final construction plans for the project. I don't know if that helps clarify things, Madeline.
I'm still confused, but I'll just listen along. I just, I guess I would, what, do you anticipate seeking input from town boards and committees? And when is the decision being made that that input would be most helpful?
Right. This is where it's sort of, is it the Recreation Commission role to get that? Or is it the select board that would drive that now, as you see it, Luke?
Well, honestly, I think it would be RecCom that would, that would really be the driver for that. But ultimately, I, you know, in order for this to fly at town meeting, I think we'd need to have every board on board, no pun intended, right? So, so it's really the next few months that, you know, everything's got to fall into place, right? Because you want to go in with a solid package to town meeting. So town meeting says, yes, this makes sense. So yeah, I mean, that would be, and then ultimately, you sign off on it after. Like, town meeting is really, in my opinion, it would be the last step, right? You know, after everybody's okay with this, then, you know, then, then town meeting just kind of does the stamp of approval and, you know. But the due diligence is done, yeah, over the next few months.
But just to be clear, the planning board wouldn't typically probably weigh in on enterprise accounting?
No, but you could weigh in on the, what is the, what are we referring to? Yeah, it's the final site plan approval, which is going to come from having the construction plan, or what's the right word for the plan that...
Yeah, it's like a feasibility study, right?
The feasibility study that the Recreation Commission would have to authorize and...
I think it's unlikely that site plan, the site plan review process can be accomplished before town meeting. My understanding is that the engineering hasn't even started and won't start until January. It's quite a lengthy process where there's a conceptual plan and a preliminary pre-filing meeting. There's all kinds of studies that have to be done, notices in the mosquito. I mean, I'm not saying we wouldn't try, we'd give it our best, but I just, I don't, I think it's unlikely that would happen by April 25th.
So, yeah, Madeline, I mean, I raised that point to Drew, because I do, I thought, I think it is ambitious. And Drew, maybe he's naive on that, you obviously know more, but he feels he can get it done. I, there are two issues, I think, that are important in this. One is, is, can the site plan be done before town meeting? If it can't be done before town meeting, then it's not enough information, probably, to put it to the vote at town meeting. So that, that is another gate in my mind. The other question, which also came out in the Council on Aging meeting last week, which was also pretty engaged, let's say, on the pickleball, is what kind of site plan? I mean, I don't think, Drew is certainly not envisioning a true engineering site plan at this moment. I think what he's trying to do is get feasibility, answer the question that comes up quite often in the comments about pickleball. Can the Mosley Vanta land support both the pickleball as envisioned and a notional community center of a certain size? And how, you know, how complete of a study does one need to do to just answer that question? Can we cite it in that general area? And I know one of the women who sent us the letters and architect, she put out a whole little sketch of that. I mean, there's, people are looking at that. So that's itself a question, and that's a question for you, particularly, Madeline and planning board. What level of site plan review would you accept to at least get a good understanding of what's potentially possible? It's not a true site plan, it's kind of a site plan light. And maybe, my advice is maybe you should engage Drew and get it the same. Because if he's under one impression and you're under a different one, and he brings a plan in February, and you say, "That's no good, I can't deal with that," that's not helpful. So I guess sooner rather than later, I think you should, in my opinion, you should reach out to him.
And vice versa. The site plan review process is set forth in our bylaws and our rules and regulations. So it's right on our website. And that was one of our preliminary concerns when we looked at this on December 13th, that, that our understanding is the community center part of it would just be hypothetical. And we couldn't do site plan review on a hypothetical building.
No, and I don't think that would be the expectation. I mean, I don't, yeah, no, I, well, no, I think he, I think he does. I mean, you know, part of it is, is, yeah, once you do the feasibility, then you get an engineering piece done, right? So you incorporate Stamsky or whoever niche, right? You get somebody that does these sorts of things, and they would lay out where the building would go. They would lay out all of that, and then... Yeah, it's tight, yeah, no, and I think that's why, you know, Drew started his process way back when, right? So to get more time to do all of this, right? There's, there's some at-risk component, right? And it's, and I think he was hoping that there would be more support at this stage to spend the fund. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, it depends on the planning board, it depends on whatever engineering firm they go with, their availability. I mean, yeah, it's, it takes a bit of time, so...
So let me make a suggestion then, because I'm just conscious of the time and that there are other people that are here that would like to make comments. Just, I think it's noted that you've raised a lot of, you know, significant concern about the ability of the planning board to, you know, seriously review something and given the process that you normally have to go through. So let's agree that we're going to make sure that Drew reaches out to Madeline. I don't think we want to put it all on Madeline, right?
Thank you.
The planning board. So, and then we will move from there. Let me see who else is, let's see, so I guess we're alternating. Anybody else here in the audience that wanted to, in person, that would like to make a comment? Sure, come on up to the mic, please.
Yeah, my name is Wayne Meyer, and I'm on Woodland Road. My wife, you heard just a couple of minutes ago, talk. And I have just some comments. Yes, we do play pickleball, and I would remind people that it's one of the only sports that I know of that will span seven decades. I've seen players... I've seen players as young as eight in a tournament and playing for fun. I've played with someone that is 80. In fact, I think closer, yeah, 85. And the, the span of players is usually in the range of high 40s, a lot of 50s, a lot of 60s and 70s. So when you look at the, the ability of a lot of the residents of this town to be able to play and enjoy it, if they're willing, is quite high. So all the other things that are out there, the soccer field, baseball field, they don't cater to seven decades. They cater to maybe two. So please keep that in consideration for the accessibility of our citizens to be able to use a facility and have fun. The other thing that I wonder about is, I know there's an attachment to the community center and, and I think that's great, right? But if there was no pickleball donation from a generous donor, would we be even being talking about a community center at all? Would it even be mentioned? But now that someone is offering some funds to build something, all of a sudden it's connected to the community center. And oh my gosh, why don't we have that? So now we have someone that's willing to adjust to try and put a framework in for a community center. And because it never was in there, but the connection, I read a thing in the mosquito last week that said, from the Council of Aging, and someone said, well, I feel you're trying to slip in the community center under the rug. Well, what rug? This was brought up as a facility for pickleball and then everybody's trying to jam in the community center. So I think it's great for all the adjustments. I fully support a community center, but it just feels like it's getting dinged and dinged hard every time, like. And I don't believe that this would even, community center wouldn't even be a topic, it seems like, because it's been talked for years. So now the thing that's being brought up is being unexpectedly tied together. But I think the adjustments for being made hopefully are enough to build on that foundation.
All right, thank you. Online. All right, Mark, Mark Levitan.
Thank you. Hi, Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
I'm also the Chair of the Cultural Council, which is a town board that advocates for and supports cultural organizations in town, artists, musicians, lecturers, writers, what have you. And I hadn't thought of speaking to this point, but I, I do want to echo what Madeline said about the approval process, for starters. I did attend the Council on Aging meeting last week. It was said in front of the meeting that we, you know, the RecCom has added town meeting approval to the process. But clearly, if you read the agreement, that is a proxy vote. That is, you know, after a lot of time and effort and even money has been spent to bring this plan to a much more defined state than it is now, then the only thing left for town meeting to do is decide whether they'll be able to transact money. I think that's wrong. I think it has to be an up or down vote. And also, you know, asking the Planning Board to use their site plan review to weigh in on the merits, that's not what they're going to do. So, uh, so that's the starters. The, the next thing is that, and to the previous speaker's question about, you know, why all of a sudden are we talking about a community center? Well, that isn't the case. As folks know, for many, many years, we have collectively, as a consensus, thought we should have one. And we actually did a very detailed feasibility study. This was led by the Council on Aging and it came up with a, you know, a specific plan that can be tailored or nipped and tucked or whatever. But the fact is, that was released in the, I believe it was February of 2020, which everybody remembers, we had a pandemic start right after that. So, you know, I, I really am bothered by the thought that people think, well, you haven't, you know, nobody's come forward with a donation, you haven't raised any money yet. This does require a significant fundraising campaign that's outside of town funding. I, I'd be the first to admit that. But to me, it's inappropriate and presumptuous for the proponents of pickleball to attempt to redefine the usage and the footprint of a community center plan, which has had a ton more study than pickleball has, and just for their own expediency. And again, I don't have anything against pickleball either. I, I consider myself, you know, a fairly athletic person and I'll probably play someday, you know? But it's about our town, our resources, our precious municipal land, and how do we get to this point? And you can't re, you know, I hate to say it, I, I've been in commercial business my entire career and I've worked for this town as a volunteer for, you know, for, I don't know, eight years or so, whatever. You can't fast track this stuff to a certain point, you just can't. You need to get buy-in, you need to get the planning. I don't see a plan that shows us what this building looks like. We know it's going to be made of corrugated steel. What does it really look like? What's the footprint? What's all the, you know, the dynamics? And what is the effect on the community center? And, and Luke, I just want to mention, from my experience, and I've done a lot of building projects and renovations and things like that for commercial buildings, you can't put two buildings in a space that haven't both been, you know, fairly well fleshed out in terms of design and utilities and, and all the infrastructure. So you, you really have to have both of these things figured out if you're going to be able to, to do both. So, yeah, I'm, I'm against doing anything quickly on this and, and continuing to learn more about how all these things should work together. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Ethan Dively, our Town Council.
Thank you. I had just two points that I wanted to clarify that I thought might be helpful based on the questions we've heard. Before, before this moves on, one question was about whether or not there's a limit on the number of Carlisle residents that could be members of the pickleball facility. And the grant agreement in its current form doesn't provide any limits and commits the donor to allowing Carlisle to provide a membership preference for Carlisle residents. I know Drew has engaged with the donor more on this point, but I just wanted to clarify that right now there's no membership caps for a total number of Carlisle residents. And then the, the other point, sort of in response to Madeline's earlier questions, I just wanted to be clear that what the Select Board's approval of this grant agreement would do is commit the donor to proceed to provide the funds if the town meets its various checkpoints that are described in the grant agreement. There's very few obligations, if any, that flow directly to the town by sort of approving the grant agreement at this preliminary stage. Because that section four that I referenced, if it doesn't get site plan approval, then this thing sort of unwinds. If it doesn't receive the necessary town meeting approvals, this sort of unwinds. And the same is true for each of those points. So certainly, as you've, as you've discussed, there's a risk to some of the sort of feasibility study funds, but there is no substantial burden on the town if the Select Board approves this agreement that couldn't be walked back. And the, the grant agreement does provide for sort of negotiated timelines to meet these checkpoints. I think in the last version that I saw, that Drew shared with the donor, it was a fairly short timeline, which may have required these approvals to be obtained by the end of June of next year. So those, those are all things to keep in mind, that this is not necessarily the final word on this project coming from the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm conscious of the time, it's eight o'clock, because we have changed our agenda a little bit. We, we, we had, we picked up a little extra time. I think what I'd like to do is ask, I, I see that there's one person, Mike Hanauer, I see you on the, on the Zoom call. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't had a chance to make a comment? Because if not, if there aren't any additional ones, are there?
Yes.
How many? Three, I'm there, looks like, okay. So what I'm going to suggest, if it's, if it's, that's the rest of the Select Board, is we take the three remaining, those that are on the Zoom call that are raising their hands to speak. We take those last three and it would be great if you have, you know, new, something new to comment or questions that are new, try to do that and, and maybe just be conscious of the time. And then I'm going to move on from this part of the agenda. And I just want to remind everybody that we will reopen this discussion again on January 11th and provide some more answers and, and also sort of how we see this unfolding. So with that said, Mike, would you like to go next and introduce yourself and where you live, please?
Sure, I'd be glad to. The name is Mike Hanauer, I live at 200 Longridge Road. I first like to mention there were a number of people that wanted to speak by Zoom, but the published Zoom link with the agenda was wrong and that has kept a number of people out. I'll keep my, my comments really brief in the interest of time and probably expand on January 11th. But in looking at this very carefully, I've come to believe that a yes on this, a yes on this facility, you know, would be a, a major drag on Carlisle finances and quality of life for decades to come. I think it would be a terrible tragic mistake. The estimates are that of 400 memberships, 300 of them would be from people outside of Carlisle. Somebody wants to build a regional Mecca for, for, for this sport in Carlisle and people in Carlisle don't need that. You know, we need to service our own needs, not to be a regional Mecca for, for what maybe belongs next to a highway in Chelmsford, but certainly not here. And for this point, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I did send a letter to the Select Board on September 30th and I would ask each of you to, to make sure that you got that letter. And if not, let me know, I will, I will resend it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did receive your letter. Thank you. Marilyn, I, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. My name is Marilyn Cugini and I'm at 300 Curve Street in Carlisle. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to comment. I'll try not to repeat what has been said by so many other people, although I want to say I support many of the comments that are directed at saying that we hope the Select Board, we will think about the fact that this particular gift offer could be one of many, could be one of some, but it is the one that is driving this discussion right now that really makes us all think about land use in Carlisle, how little land we have available. All of us know this. The same is true for our budgets. We know that there's not a lot of leeway with our budgets and that our taxes are already high. So it, it really, to me, is the point that I want to make to the Select Board is, is as a town residence, resident, I look at this and say, is this something that makes sense from the priorities of the town for the use of the land that we know that we can do something with? We have many needs, we have many committees that all probably would like to have a piece of it. And as far as the Planning Board is concerned, I know that they are responsible for thinking about these sorts of issues. I think the Select Board, if they were to jump into looking at signing this agreement, even if the town attorney is saying that it's something that can be walked back at any point, by establishing an agreement, we are setting expectations. You are setting expectations and I think you have to look very carefully. I would assume that this, this grant agreement has been drafted by the donor, not by the town. I, I would encourage the town to say, hey, this is all completely negotiable. Let's look at it from our perspective, not their perspective. Let's think about what we want to get out of this. I think that if you just even took something as simplistic as saying, how much money are they offering for the pickleball court? And how much are they offering for a community center? And you look at what do, what do the residents of our town really want in terms of priorities? I think you'd have to flip it upside down. I think the pickleball priority would be way lower than a community center. So I think that the points that have been made about how much acreage is this even supposed to be taking up? That's unclear, the plan hasn't been made obvious. So how can you even consider a grant agreement? If you don't even know what is truly being proposed and how much of our resources it will actually use? I also haven't seen any financial projections as to the operation of such a center. I, I think there are an awful lot of points in this agreement that are not in, in the town's favor. And it's clearly driven by the grantor wanting to accomplish its own goals. So I would just encourage the Select Board to take a step back, not rush to judgment, not rush into this agreement, but take your time to truly assess this opportunity for what it truly is and, and then make a decision. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. I, I just want to make one factual statement about the development of the grant agreement. It has, it has been sort of, the, the preparation of it from a legal standpoint has done by, has been done by our Town Council, primarily Tom Harrington. And it has been in conjunction with, obviously, the donor, but also the Recreation Commission. So it has been a process up to now of back and forth negotiations. So I just want to make that clear. Let's see, is it, yeah, Stacy Lennon, please.
Hi, you all know me. All right, three quick comments. One is, I think, I'm curious when you plan to have sort of open deliberation of the Select Board's views on this matter? You've been fielding a lot of information and in the last meeting, you know, Drew was there representing RecCom and you were, you seemed like you were moving toward actually taking a vote until I sort of, you know, prompted you, hey, you want some public input? So I'd like to know when you are planning to deliberate publicly and ask the hard questions of Drew? Because no hard questions were asked at the last meeting. And it's, I, I'm hearing the rumblings that you do have hard questions. So when is that going to happen publicly? That's one. Second, just on the economics, Council's representative noted that there, there wouldn't be caps on the number of Carlisle residents in the grant agreement. But there's also been no feasibility study to figure out like, well, what's, what's reasonable? Like Drew just sort of put into his PowerPoint, 100 Carlisle and 300 other town residents, or, or, yeah, non-Carlisle resident memberships, the donor themselves cast out on the 100 number. And like right now, we're just all like putting a finger in the air like, well, I think this and I think that. So I'll just echo the, the comments on the, the economic feasibility piece. And lastly, I just want to, I guess, check in that Select Board does read all the chat, right? Because there are some people on this meeting that aren't speaking publicly, but might be interested in putting a comment into the chat. So I just want to verify that you all will be reading the chat and field, you know, fielding the comments that others might be interested in putting in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We will, we will make sure that we read the chat. We have looked at the chat from the last meeting as well, but thank you for that. Oh, I was going to make, that's one other thing I was going to say now, it just flipped my mind. Okay. Is there, we, we need to move on, okay. So listen, I, I really thank everybody, I know the rest of the Select Board does, because we really appreciate hearing from you. We have not had an opportunity to hear from. We have not had an opportunity to hear from the people in the community as, until tonight, really, other than individual comments and, you know, messages to the select board or to the town administrator. So I, I just want to review that January 11th is another opportunity for people to come and offer comment, but also we will have more information to share with you. We're gonna, we'll, we'll see how quickly we can have the recreation commission provide us with a much more detailed financial estimate, cost and income description, as well as a, if they have a tentative building layout, then I think we can provide that information at our next meeting. And we will see if we can't make sure that the recreation commission is here. I had expected that we would have that tonight. So we'll try to make sure that happens on the 11th. And with that, I'm gonna end this part of the meeting. Thank you all for being here in person. And those of you online, of course, you're more than welcome to stay. But if you don't wish to stay yet, you're, thank you and have a good evening. Come on up Vanessa, sure, so people can hear.
Quick question for town council, actually.
Yeah.
In terms of running an open meeting lot, like with the, the question about the chats, how do people who are here in person see the chat comments? Anyway, I'll leave, I mean, it's, I, yeah, I personally am interested in that.
I just saved the chat so I can, I could email that to you.
Yeah, but I mean, just kind of like in terms of other meetings, meetings I might be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, just a, just a question for town council, another time.
We're learning about hybrid meetings.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you all. Yeah, have a good night. Yes, have a good holiday if you're celebrating. All right, so we, it's now 8:13. We are not having the discussion of the municipal land needs with Nathan not being here. And let's do the update on the personnel policy for providing health insurance to surviving spouses because that's real quick. You want to do that Kate or shall I?
Sure, all right, well, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I was just, very quickly, I think we've all seen the notes from Kate, right? That it's gonna have to go to town meeting for approval, a bylaw change. So we'll, we'll, that will be one of the warrant.
I have, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Donna's note, I mean, she's got like three options.
Right.
Thirty-two B, D, and one half. By ballot vote, I'm sorry, no, we want to do town meeting. Thirty-two B, nine D, and three quarters. It reminds me of Harry Potter, you know. By town meeting vote or by ballot, a town may agree to pay up to 50% of the premium for surviving spouse, spouse's coverage. Well, no, we could decide to do it 30% or 20, you know, yeah, you, yes, you could.
Fix the amount.
You could, yes, but no more than 50% is what this is saying.
And didn't she, had you guys arrived at 50%?
No, we guys had arrived.
Yes.
At 50%, yes.
And so if, I guess then the question is not 32B, 90 without the fractions.
Well, we, the main thing is, may I make a suggestion? Why don't we, this is something really that we could work out offline and have town council involved. The local language is gonna be.
Yeah, no, no, but I can just answer his question quickly. And the reason we're taking three quarters is because it's by town meeting where we could actually stand up in front of people.
And do it.
And the other ones are all ballot votes. And we rejected that because it's too hard for people to understand.
All right, good. All righty, so let's look in our packets. We have the, check in on the select board goals. So if you go down into your packet, comes up after the grant agreement.
We need somebody to be muted up there.
Maybe you want to just mute everybody, Tim, that's on the Zoom call.
We gotta find out who it is and then call them out.
Use your light up if you talk.
All righty. So if you look at our goals, just briefly, financial sustainability, environmental sustainability, citizen engagement, and then quality of education and town hall alignment. So let's go back and just kind of look section by section. So under the long-term affordability for a diversity of households to be here in Carlisle, short term, we said, look at the expected growth in expenses over the next five to 10 years to develop a plan for addressing the gaps. We have not done that. Yeah, and so we need to, I think we will see in the master plan that that's a recommendation as well. And so.
I, I think we need staff time for that. And right now, staff time is just not there because of different openings, different reasons.
Yeah.
So when we get some staff availability, that maybe will happen.
Yeah, and similarly with number two, obviously, they flow one from the other under financial.
I will say, we, we've met, you know, with FinCom a couple of times and will continue to do so. And they also feel while they're, you know, they're moving in that direction too. And they do want, they would like to have a policy that has a number that starts with a two, I think.
Yeah, well, since, since our tax rate can only go up two and a half percent, that, you know, we are, we can't decide that, oh, well, we'd like to have our budgets grow by 5%.
Oh, no, I mean, there are mechanisms to do that and we do have excess capacity. But I think they've stated and we generally agree that we want to keep it in the two.
Yeah. Exactly.
All right, we, good to move on? Just know that we have more to do, yeah.
Well, I, I just want to say one other thing is that, okay, so this is partly has to do with, you know, staffing in the financial department, but the finance department. But it also has to do with the fact that we need some IT for this. We need more dissemination of the financial software. Suddenly, I, you know this.
GIS?
Oh, Munis, okay. And, and GIS. So that's what we need.
I guess I'm not understanding that part.
Well, GIS helps you to figure out about your growth because it tells you where, you know, it's possible or not. And, and it helps the assessors and it helps, you know. I'm just, I'm just going again that the town is pretty severely understaffed at the moment.
That's true.
But maybe this is an appropriate time to ask Tim about, I know Nathan's not here and he's part of that group with you that's looking at the current provider of our IT services, is that the right way to say it? Where do things stand with that? Because we had, you know, back in the spring town meeting, we authorized funds for a IT position. So, yep, can you give us an update on that?
Well, we didn't, we were not successful in hiring that into the position. The technology working group's been discussing with DriveTech what the town's needs would look like in terms of continuing with the third-party model. There's a recognition that this would have to be part of a, you know, an RFP. It's not something we can just add to, you know, DriveTech's contract. But so the discussions have been with them on what they think the town would, would need in terms of IT support. If, if those services were to be expanded in a comprehensive way. So they'd be free to bid on that, but it, it wouldn't be a, something that would happen, you know, automatically. So that's, that's ongoing. We, we don't have a proposal at this point, but those discussions continue.
And so the, the, I'm hearing you correctly, we, the working group has had conversations with DriveTech. Do they, and the work, and DriveTech understands what it is, or has come back and helped us, helped you figure out what it is we need? Or they haven't come back yet with any response?
Well, they, they've come back with some response. But it, it's that conversation of if the town were to put more resource in this area, what additional services might
Right.
you or another vendor be able to provide to the town?
Right.
So that's been the conversation more or less.
And have they come back with a response to that?
A, a partial response. They're, they're not done talking about it, but.
So I, it seems to me we gotta, we, at some point of select board, we, we'd be looking for a recommendation from your working group to say, here's how we think we should meet the town's IT needs. Not hire, not use the funds that we authorize for a position, but instead we're recommending you go with an outside vendor and we need to issue an RFP for
Right, for that.
With this, with this following description of what it is we want and see.
That level of service, right.
Yeah. Is that, am I framing that correctly?
Yes, yeah, I think that's accurate, yeah.
Well, but it was, it was my understanding that the new IT position that the FinCom put in was 75,000. And they knew that that wasn't going to be enough. And the plan was that we were going to take money from the current contract and add it to that for the position. But that when the position got actually advertised, it was only advertised for 75K, you're right?
That's correct, yeah.
So that, so I'm not surprised we didn't get somebody to answer that. And then suddenly we're back to third party. And actually, we're back to nowhere because this has been going on for months. We haven't really heard anything back. And I'm getting kind of nervous about this.
You may be getting nervous, but I would say that you can't get a good IT person to really do it for less than six figures. And I don't know that we as a town want to have that position at that pay grade. Even if we find that person, that person will need a third party to do stuff. You're probably not gonna say that. So I actually believe whether we stumbled into it or we got smart about it, that first exploring what third parties can do, because they're all over the place, is probably better for the town, in my opinion. And so I would support the course of action we're on, which is, let's do a, no kidding, real good spec about all the things we need. Doesn't need to be DriveTech, they're just one bidder, but they certainly know our system well. And let's see what that looks like.
Well, I'd like to know then, when are we gonna see it?
I don't know that.
Luke, do you have a comment on this before we?
No, I just, I agree completely.
Yeah. So Tim, is that something you can work on and provide us with a, sort of a timeline on?
Yes, yeah. I'll, I'll do that. I mean, you know, it's probably overdue, you know, the, the group report to the board anyway, so.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll take that back to them and, and we, we do need to get a proposal back to the board in short order, so.
Do you think that's something that could be done by the January 11th meeting to at least have a?
I, well, I wouldn't want to promise, I don't know if I can even get these guys to meet.
Get people together, right.
But.
Right. But maybe.
I'll shoot for January, certainly.
Okay.
No, 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 it's, we, we don't, haven't even put that together.
Yeah, you got, we should do that.
Okay. All right, Tim, thank you. Okay. And then on the environmental sustainability. Now, right, we talked about getting something out to everybody about looking at, considering the environmental impact of when they're making decisions, whether they're beneficial or negative. And we said here, create a town-wide policy and process, which we have not done. That also is going to be in the master plan, some version of that, or at least their recommendations. Environmental sustainability, yeah. Yeah. And so, and this year, in terms of financial decision-making, we've, we're really past the point of asking departments to provide that in their requests for the FY '23 budget. But what we may want to do is come back with the FinCom and take a look at the budget requests in light of this to see if there's any, you know, changes or, or considerations in terms of environmental impact that might argue for taking a change in what might be purchased, for example.
I have to say, in terms of the pickleball thing, that's absolutely the place where we really need to put the stake in the ground.
Right.
And I think actually, it's Ben Lee's letter really underscored that very well. And in no uncertain terms.
Yes.
And we get to the comments of, you know, you gotta walk the walk, right?
Right.
Absolutely, you know, so we can't just, yeah, exactly.
Lay down concrete and put up a metal.
Or put up solar panels and say we're done with, you know, making this environmentally sustainable. Yeah.
Right.
So I guess that's another thing, Luke, for you to take that, so the recreation commission knows seriously, yeah.
Yeah, no, I've been, I've been texting her all along.
Okay, good, good.
He stopped.
Was he, was he not planning to come or didn't know he ought to come or just not available?
No, we actually talked and he just said he wasn't planning on coming. So, well, he figured, well, part of it, and part of it is I think they've already had a couple of assets, right? So he wanted it to be a select board focus. Right, because I, I think, you know, because what we'll see, I'm sure in the January meeting, is that we'll turn on him.
Well, right, but he couldn't answer that.
Yeah, well, that's the biggest thing, right.
He should hear the feedback because he should hear it.
Yeah, I encourage him. Yeah, no, I, I agree. No, I think he'll be, well, I'm pretty sure he'll be up there.
Well, that, let's, I would really appreciate having that confirmed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I've already texted, yeah, we, we.
Okay. No, no, if, sans the buts, that would be great. Okay.
Remind him REITCOM reports. As your liaison.
All right.
Christmas bonuses are coming up.
True, right, yeah.
Yeah.
All these highly paid volunteers.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty sure he'll be here.
All right, so let's look at citizen engagement. So working to increase town, interest in town government by ensuring all committees are well structured and supported by the select board. So the first short-term goal, I think we have made good progress on, which is meeting these committees, which Jen has kindly provided us with the, you know, the latest listing of the committees and the check marks and dates show when we had a conversation with them at the select board. And so we've made, I think we've made good progress here. I know that if Nathan were here, he would say he really wants to get the Friends of Center Park in. And I had a conversation with Allison Saylor, who's the president, and they're more than happy to come in whenever we want them. They'd love to tell us what they're up to.
And we decided we sort of look at the, we should look at the number of meetings left in our term and see how we can sort of divide up that load so we.
Yeah. And we know, for instance, if you look down at the planning board or the master plan steering committee, you know, the master plan steering committee, we're gonna hear from at our joint meeting with the planning board, which we're gonna talk about a little bit later. But so some of these, and the recreation commission, I think we'll have had good interaction with them. Anyway, yeah, we should come back and look at these. And we're definitely looking forward to the housing, Affordable Housing Trust. All righty.
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll have to talk about that tonight.
Yeah, I don't know, it'll come up under the liaison, you can do that under the liaison. So, all right. And then what did we say? Committee charter and team reviews, we have not done that.
No.
Been busy.
Well, you know, there's been a lot of.
We pushed out new charters for all these new task forces, right?
Well, the public safety facilities.
Well, and the transfer station we did this year.
Yeah, that's true.
And town governance we did this year.
Yeah.
And Harp, I don't know if we gave them the charter, but I, but we've, we've chartered up some new ones.
That's true. That's true.
So I don't know what team, team reviews is what, meeting, is that part of meeting with them?
I've been, which one?
Team review, number two.
Charter, committee charter and team.
I think maybe did we mean?
Term, term reviews.
Term, not team. Yeah, 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 okay, that makes more sense, right. Term, not team. Yeah, 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 okay, that makes more sense, right, right, okay. Well, I think we, what we should remember then is the opportunity we have at the end of this fiscal year as as the Select Board is going to be doing reappointments or appointments. Get something out in advance of that.
Yeah.
But also, oh, go ahead, Tim.
I was just going to say, uh, for the municipal schools, uh, facilities, we need to redo their charter too, but I've been kind of resisting redoing this one until we know more, if we're going to get closer to a department. Because it just doesn't seem worth doing a lot of work now to just have to revise all of it. So I just want to let people understand why, why I'm sort of resisting that.
Yes, yeah.
So that segues into the comment I was about to make, which is, and it'll also come up in our town administrator position discussion. You know, and I, we've got the Governance Committee working away and they've got an agenda to do and they're going to report out. And Master Planning is doing its thing and they're going to report out. And we have a whole, you know, retirement that's coming, so there's a lot of pieces that influence this that maybe, you know, there's a time next year to, or in the summer to start to kind of.
Summer sounds like it.
Reflect on those pieces rather than kind of go at the.
Right, you definitely don't want to address one area without consideration of all the different reports that are coming into us, yeah, yeah. Uh, any other comments on the citizen engagement one?
Um, yeah, one, another thing is, though, I think a lot of the citizen engagement is going to require more staffing on the town side. Again, we just can't be asking volunteers um at night, you know, to be doing a daytime job.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to have enough staff that, and in fact, that's part of the problem with the Municipal Facilities Committee is they're being asked to do a daytime job um and they need to have support. And then they shouldn't be in the trenches, they should be taking the ten thousand what you and just kind of, you know, making sure that the steamer, you know, the ship of state stays on course.
Yeah, yeah. And not be down in the engine room.
And that also uh leads, it's not actually, well, citizen engagement in term, there's two layers to citizen engagement. One is just, you know, people know what's going on and they're involved, right? But the other one, which is definitely coming out in the Governance Task Force, is getting more new volunteers, not just us, all us old guys, right?
Yeah.
And I was actually talking to Paul, he, I had that little interview.
Oh, you had your interview.
And it's something we we need to think more about, and they'll certainly be thinking about it, which is, in my mind, the younger parent, the parents of younger children really don't have the time. And I think Zoom has helped because people can participate in meetings, which is the starter drug, if you will.
It is.
You know, the gateway drug.
Gateway drug, yes.
Being involved in the board because you start seeing about the board. And we need probably to uh maybe push that more. That, as I was talking to him, I was thinking that if we could somehow promote more about these agendas being out there and I like it when lots of people join.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's what we want. And if more people join the meetings even remotely, they'll begin to be involved.
Yeah.
Because it is a heavy lift.
Well, it's what happened with Christina on the planning, on the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yeah.
So that's something we should think about, you know.
Yeah. I think that's a good point. Okay, so let's go on to quality of education. I think we've done a good job on strengthening the ties between the town and the school both. I think what the work you're doing on at municipal facilities and trying to coordinate maintenance, and I think the FinCom has has done a great job of working more closely with the school around the budget.
I think, I I think also we have to give some credit to the school committee. The current school committee was much more interested in in uh being outreach and 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 being interested in understanding that they that they are elected by the entire town, not just by the parents. And so that's a concept that I think is is starting to take hold there.
Any other comments on the item? All right, and then Town Hall Alignment is the last one. So I think we we've started that, right, we did the whole um Personnel Policies review and we did, you know, Tim, you you and Mark Way did get uh various department heads getting, setting goals and um I, we haven't heard much about sort of quarterly reviews. I think with the changes we've had um in the staff at Town Hall. I should ask you, Tim, how you how you think this has been going in the last, I mean, really, at this point, we should have had one quarterly review meeting should have happened between department heads and their staffs, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and do you have any um?
Did I read the quarterly reviews at the board? Meeting with the staff, does that, I mean, otherwise it's not a.
No, it was a quarterly review of the department staff heads with their staff.
Right.
And you with your department heads.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's that's kind of number one, yeah.
Yes, that is number one.
Well, that's the first, the first review happened in October and there'll be another one. People getting into a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's that's ongoing this year.
Well, and and the risk could sound like a broken record. Here again, uh, we have a budget item on our list.
In terms of a.
That would be helpful for human, human resources, um, which is really almost um is necessary for really doing this, you know, having enough leadership and, you know, time and staff time. Right, so you with us? Are you still here?
Yeah, no, I was trying to find Debbie Benley's email. I know, I I.
I can send it to you.
No, I've got it. I thought it came directly from from.
It was forwarded from Jen, yeah, to us.
I gave him the ID.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Only seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, Tim was saying we're, you know, we're partway through it and I think um, I mean, Tim, would you say that if we had a Personnel Director so that you weren't trying to do all of that plus what you've been doing, that?
Yeah, no, I mean, certainly, yes, that's a lot of things would go more smoothly.
Yeah.
If someone's dedicated to that.
Yeah.
Piece of it.
Yeah. So then if you look at number two, um, okay. We have not met with the all staff. We we had a party, we had an informal gathering, um, but that is something we, I think we have, I would really like to see us do that in the new year. And we may, maybe this is an opportunity because of the various positions that are open at Town Hall and some of the rethinking or just how those are going to get filled. It would be a good opportunity to have that conversation with the whole town staff too.
I have to say COVID has kind of gotten in our way there because, I mean, we didn't even have our Christmas party that we were going to have, so.
Right.
Luckily, we got one of the outdoor parties out.
Yeah.
Right.
Probably in the spring we can do another.
Which is different than meeting with all staff on a quarterly basis to better understand how we can support staff.
Yeah.
But um, but it is.
You're right, that's a good thing to point out to ourselves, that it's very hard to meet with everybody face to face.
Yeah.
Right, it's.
We could, I mean, again, you're playing about, and it's timing there. Governance coming out with its recommendations, Tim moving on and us needing to think about that. We should get that data. We should figure out how to get that data and and just bake it into that.
The data of how we can support.
And what the town staff themselves feel about what they would want.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
That's something we could gather. I think governance may be gathering some of it, but we should do it. It doesn't have to be a giant forum. We maybe have to break it up, so we ought to, we ought to think about that.
Yeah. Yeah, or it could even be sort of department by department or maybe was there some kind of a survey that could be a piece of it that's not, doesn't require.
We we should think about that.
Yeah, we should.
The problem we get into is we're going to be pretty, you know, it gets increasingly busy to town meeting.
Yes.
And um and then, you know, it's year end, so I I really feel like, and it may not be the same people, I don't know. How many of us are running?
I have to have a track.
Well, let's see, Luke, you're running.
Barney and I are up.
Luke's term is up.
Not up yet? Oh, good, oh, good, okay.
And Nathan's not up yet.
Yeah, so you.
So, all right, but I, but anyway, I, the summer, it's harder to do, but I feel like we should meet more, like, we should be meeting in the summer. We just, because other things won't be as busy, but we we have a lot to do.
Yeah.
And I don't see us chipping away at it enough, you know, between now and town meeting.
Uh huh.
But anyway, okay.
Yeah, um. Yeah, and the mechanism for celebrating excellence, you know, we have, we had talked about some kind of a um merit-based.
Yeah.
I mean, there there are other ways you could celebrate excellence too, but um I don't know if we want to try to set up some, you know, small working group or I guess we should think about, maybe what we should do is take a look at the last part of the fiscal year, you know, in January and what, maybe pick just one or two things off of this list that we think would make sense to try to work on, or maybe none, but see if there's any one or two that we think we could try to work on before the summertime.
Well, our progression on the goal setting was uh three-part, so it was introduce the concept first, which was done with Mark's help.
Right.
And then have them set goals and
Right.
react to, you know, which is what Tim would work on or hopefully he would. And then when you get that to a point where people understand how to do it, you can begin to layer in
Some kind of merit.
Some kind of merit for doing it.
Based on the data that, yeah.
The data, right, so I don't know that we're there yet and it may take another year to bake in.
Yeah.
Uh, but um, you know, what most organizations do is at the close of their fiscal year, they kind of look at how much money they have left and they think about what bonus pool basically they could, you know, do. And we could do the same, but but you really want to get that other process going so people sort of understand the basis of why you made that decision.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Which is why we're interested in having these goals.
Yeah.
You know, every quarter, you know, be reviewed.
You know, I, we shouldn't wear the hair shirt too much. I mean.
No.
We're doing a lot of stuff that.
Yes, we are.
By our select boards, I don't think tackled, right?
Yes, yes. Well, plus, you certainly didn't have two dog hearings. Okay, um, we're good with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mind me, I want to talk about dogs.
Yeah, okay, um, so uh let's, so then if, uh, look at that, we're back on track. Eight forty-five, the discussion of the town administrator, assistant town administrator position. So I have a suggestion to make about how we think about this. And that is to think about the various um uh work that needs to get done by the the current town administrator position. And what are the priorities that uh need to get done um in the short term? And looking at those key priorities, have that help drive our discussion about, okay, so what do we want to do in terms of um a how we want to approach getting that work done, short run, long run? Rather than diving right into the specific job descriptions and tweaking the job description and.
Especially since we don't, also, again, with the idea of the Governance Committee making, I I mean, I don't see.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it it we're way ahead of our skis.
Exactly, so but even the, so even, I agree with everything I've said, but even before we get to Barney's, like what needs done, let's go even one level up and say, conceptually, can you see anything other than, I'm going to load it that way, can you see anything other than an interim position for a year while all this other stuff comes in and we start through it? And and including, by the way, probably what an assistant TA would do and who should hire the assistant TA. We don't yet have a TA.
Yeah.
So we've got to address, so back to your point, I think we have to address the short-term need to get stuff done by an administrator.
I see what you're, okay.
And maybe the way to think about Barney's, you know, question is what, what what do we need to fill for that position? You know, to just keep the, everything running.
Yes.
We're doing all this other stuff and governance and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, you got it.
And then we're going to really do a real, I mean, one of the things governance is going to say is, should there be a town manager or a town administrator? Or should, actually, three options, I think, is what they're saying. Town manager in the classic Concord sense, which we don't.
Well, anyway, let's just, yeah, that's that's an option.
A town administrator in the Carlisle sense where there's a lot of nighttime government involvement.
Yeah.
To use Tom Harrington's phrase. Or the hybrid, which is just, which I think we already can do, is just push more on the TA than we presently do.
More authority or responsibility, make a stronger town administrator.
They're going to come back with their.
Right.
I I was just reading an article, a town, they call them town coordinators. They don't call them administrators, they call them.
Call them that.
There's another, I mean, you don't call them a TA, you call them.
Wellesley has a town coordinator.
Coordinator.
Which is even less authority.
No, it does, it does, okay. But you make a job title in order to give it more authority, but you don't have to go through the cumbersome process of a town manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah. Tim, what's your, what's your uh sort of thinking about this going forward? Like, how how would, I don't know if you've gotten to where you have an idea about what you think you might recommend, but um what are your thoughts so far about?
What are we going to do without you?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I do, I I do agree, I I do think an interim uh town administrator makes a lot of sense because like particularly if changes are going to be recommended or discussed by the town that uh you wouldn't want to rush and and hire a town administrator and then all of a sudden you're talking about, you know, maybe that person's not who you'd have in mind for a town manager position or, you know, a different kind of position. And it it buys you, I think, the breathing room to uh to consider uh, you know, making that choice if it's six months or nine, you know, it it gives you some time to to do that, you know. And I think that the the process to find an assistant, I mean, the, an interim, I mean, it could be similar to to the process of of the permanent hire. I mean, you might still want to involve an executive search firm that would, you know, take the time to to learn about the community and take the input from the department heads and because, I mean, the board is is going to be, you know, the run-up to town meeting sort of sucks everyone's energy. The next couple of months, we're going to be doing all-town meeting all the time and not, you know, not really in position to run a a search process, and even for an interim, it's it's uh if that's what the decision is, so, you know. I do think that uh it's money well spent. I think a lot of those firms have been doing it for a long time. They know what uh, well, they know the marketplace, they know, you know, who who's out there and and what their skill sets are and and uh, you know, I think it takes a lot of pressure off of the board. And what they'll do, they just won't post an ad for a town administrator in an interim, they'll they'll put out a statement on the town and, you know, they'll talk about the town's history and the town, you know, resources and values and and uh it it's almost like an advertising piece for people that might be thinking of making a move to a town like Carlisle, they they get to see what's what's out there. They do a mini version, I mean, I, we did it for school superintendent when I was on school committee and you're right, they they'll do a mini version of what governance is doing or what we should be doing, which is interview people and get, you know, you'll get a whole snapshot. They'll they'll do a process, I agree with that. Right. And then the other piece to me is you get, if you get an interim who just wants to be an interim, you're going to get a data point from that interim in the course of, say, the first six months of his or her tenure. Another view of like what's going on.
Right.
From the inside.
Yeah, right.
So I think it's, I agree with that.
I agree with that. But you, Luke, what's your?
Well, yeah, I I mean, I think the biggest thing for the, whether we go manager, administrator, coordinator, whatever the title is, I think out of the gate, we have to be one hundred percent supportive because we have an. I think out of the gate, we have to be one hundred percent supportive, because we haven't always done this with you, Tim, unfortunately. A hundred percent supportive, this is what the position is, this is what their responsibilities are. If you don't, you know, follow what, you know, we're saying for this position, right? Then you're going to be accountable to us, because I, I think, I think.
Maybe this is to other staff people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I think what happens now is, you know, it, it's, when you've had somebody in a position for a long period of time, and this is nothing to take away from what you've done, and people get comfortable with certain things, right? And, you know, I, this is why I thought having an HR piece would be very helpful. Right? Because, and, and, and I still think we should have a very strong HR piece. You know, whether it's, you know, a benefits issue or something like that, but also conflict, right? When, when there's that conflict, it, it's hard when, you know, someone in a position of authority doesn't necessarily, that when the group doesn't necessarily feel that that person has the authority. And I don't think we've always been a hundred percent supportive of you when there's a situation. And, you know, that's completely our fault. And it's not just this board, it's past boards. You know, we kind of say, oh, well, Tim handled this, or, you know, and, and we don't fully support. So I think, you know, that's my biggest thing going into this, and whether it's an interim person, or, you know, when we hire the full-time person, it's, you know, this is what we fully expect, you know, get in line, basically. You know, and it's not a, it's not a shakeup, right? But it's a, you know, change is happening, and, you know, we got to get it right out of the gate, because otherwise, we'll just be swirling again.
Yeah.
I think, you know?
And, you know, one thing about that, and again, maybe, well, I'll just say, I think involving the town hall staff in some discussions early on about, right, what are their needs, what do they, you know, what are the things important in the interim administrator's skill set? And then, if that's the way we're going, right? And, and then, and then as a part of that, there's the discussion about the expectation then, when that person coming on board. Right? And then, if we, if we're going with an interim, and then we're, we get to where we are clear about what we want for a permanent, you know, position going forward, you have that conversation again, right? Because that, that permanent position may have some additional authority, or there'd be some changes there, and we want to keep making it very clear that that's the expectation. You know, I, I did have a thought about the, the, well, let me back up a second. So, the finance committee is prepared to support adding funds to the FY twenty-three budget to support, and the, whatever we want to call it, an additional position that might be human resources, or it might be some kind of assistant position, but their thinking was, well, you know, what if you had that plugged in for six months of the fiscal year twenty-three? So, not, not coming on board right away under the, with the thinking that whoever is that permanent, long-term person as the overall administrator would want to be, have a role in who that hires.
Person, yeah.
Yeah. But on the other hand, you know, one could say, if there was specific kind of operational work that needed to be done, or could be done around the human resources and personnel, I mean, there might be an argument that says, no, let's go find a good person and bring them on board, because we know that that's something we really need, and we know it's been, it's just, it's overdue, and also, it doesn't make sense to have that as a piece of the administrator's job. It's just too much to be doing. I, I, I don't, I'm not sure which way I come down on that, but that's something I think for us to consider.
I know which way I come down on it, and I've been, I, every time I see any of the FinCom people, I tell them, we need an HR person, we need them not six months from now, we need them now. And I, I don't care what you call it, whether you call it assistant TA or HR. I want, you know, we really should be getting that, and I think
Bring, bring, so.
Be a consultant first.
Well, be a consultant or anything, but the thing is, we need, we need money in the budget to, to do that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I, I've had the same internal thought processes Barney articulated, and the drawback, even though in theory, I always side with, you hire the boss and let the boss hire the staff. But if we're going to go interim, that's a year, and then it's another six months before that person knows what they want. So, I, I'm with you on that case. I'm not prepared to go two more years limping along. We, so we probably should just.
And there's one other reason why I'm thinking this way, is because we have not yet even talked about priorities. Are we going to, are we looking for DEI? Do we have, do we give preference to, let's say, a towns person over somebody? We don't, we don't have any of that, and we need an HR person to help us formulate those policies and procedures. I'm a little worried about it. In fact, with the assessors, people that they're already, you know, looking for, and I feel like, what are they doing? Where, you know, who, who are they, who are they talking to, and what kind of process do they do, and where did they, where did they advertise? Because we don't have any, any input into that, or.
We don't have a central personnel person that.
Yeah, and we need it now.
Yeah.
And if it, I don't care whether, as you said, a consultant or a person, I think that per, I think it could just, just be a person on staff at this point. Because we need that.
Yeah.
And would help us then move along for the next hiring.
Yeah.
That's me and my anxieties just.
Yeah, no, HR's been long overdue, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm getting two, two actions. Well, there's a question, consultant or hire. I guess I would just say hire.
This is, I would say hire personally, but.
So, there's, there's that recruitment that, if we agree, we could start that. And then there's the, ah, see, I knew you couldn't. The, uh, engaging, figuring out how to engage an executive search.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, could, could you have the, the, the firm, if we're going to engage an outside firm to do the search, what about having them do both the HR search and the interim administrator search? I know it's money, but. Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Right, because, I mean, it's about our ability to
Yep.
put together our own hiring committee and figuring out, you know, I just wonder.
Well.
Well.
Yeah, but there is.
Well.
The, the recruiter will help you spec the job, but you should still have a hiring committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, no, I meant more the.
But I, but, okay.
All the legwork, the groundwork that has to get done, yeah.
We have recently done this for another, for, for another department, a couple, a few years ago. We had a hiring committee, and we had a recruiting.
Wait, you had a search firm?
Search firm and a hiring committee. And somewhere along the line, that process kind of got subverted. And I want to ensure that that process cannot be subverted, and that's why I'm talking about our policies and our talks about preferences before this even gets off the ground.
Internal supervision or the outside?
No, not the agency.
Did you say it was the agency?
The process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
So.
So, I, I, so there, we have more discussions that we have to have.
Yeah. But it sounds like we're, it sounds like, if I'm hearing this right, that the four of us are, right now, we want to see a human resources person, find a human resources person, and hire them. And it would be for a permanent human resources position. And I guess.
Tim, can I ask, since we haven't gotten off the ground with the IT, could we use the IT money for this part of the, if we've got one, let's say, tomorrow?
The human resource part, candidate that we want to hire?
Yeah, could we use the IT money for that, as long as we?
You could, it's, it's just, it's in, in the board's budget. You could spend it for any legal purpose, really, but.
Well, we did say it was for IT.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but I mean, we would, we would talk to the, we would talk to the FinCom, we would just say that.
Yeah, I know, but it was.
The town meeting vote.
Yeah, I, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I don't know why we have to do that at this point, because the budget, it's unlike, it's unlikely we're going to get anybody until very late in the fiscal year, or in the new fiscal year. So let's just budget it.
All right.
We need to work a FinCom, to your point.
Yes.
To make it a twelve-month.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Got to be a twelve-month.
Yeah.
And I think if we have a stub of two or three months, so, you know, I mean, it would be great, but I don't know it'll go that fast.
Yeah.
Because most municipal people, they, don't they mostly
Yeah, but HR is not necessarily.
Work to a fiscal year, they want to change jobs.
Yeah, but HR is different.
You're not going to want somebody who comes out of the municipal environment?
Why, why necessarily?
No, not necessarily.
No.
Well, that's not what this thing says, but okay.
What's the, oh, the assistant.
Oh, yeah, but that's because that was a, that's a, a description of an assistant town administrator. It's not a description for an HR person.
Yeah.
Ah-ha, okay, no, that's true, but you.
Okay, I don't. What do you think about that, Tim, in terms of municipal hiring? And bringing in somebody now to, to be our personnel director, whatever we're going to call it?
What, what do you think makes sense? I mean, I, I guess I worry where the resources are going to come from, but that's kind of the, yeah, a position to. If you go in that route, maybe you do go consultant.
For the human resources.
Just to start.
Just, just to start.
Just to start, to start cleaning stuff up. Because that's, I wasn't prepared for that, and I, I have to think about it. There's so many nuances to public sector HR that you don't have in private sector HR. I don't know enough about it. That, that itself would be something a consultant could help you with.
Yeah.
Okay, here's what we got. You know, that person has not got a dog in the hunt, so to speak. Just tell us, look at it, help us with these things we know we have to do, and then come back with your recommendation of what kind of person should be. You know, I mean, maybe that is the way.
I mean, there must be, but also, I mean, don't other, couldn't we identify basic, you know, job descriptions?
Oh, yeah.
Other similar towns have for an HR person, personnel person?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Have we done that yet? We have the most comparable job descriptions.
Nope.
That's a simple thing.
Right. Um, Tim, is that doable to come out of your, as people say, space?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think that would be helpful to see what other towns have put out there.
On both of them, right? The TA and on, and on both of them.
Well, you know, I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking with the town administrator. I think, Tim, you were saying this to me, and it made a lot of sense. I think you were saying this, is that it's, it's pretty much, it's a, you sort of, it's a known quantity, some of the basic priority things you have to do as a town administrator. Am I right in thinking about that? And so.
And, and those firms know what
Yeah, and so.
What a town administrator would need.
Right, so if we know, if we want an interim town administrator, we identify a search firm and have them, or I don't know, do we have to do it? No, it's not going to be up to fifty thousand where we have to do an RFP, right?
No, you could get.
No, but you might want to get two different.
Yeah, get a couple of different bids.
There, there, there are three to do just about all the searches and messages.
Set the three to.
Yeah.
So we can get some, and, and imagine the board, we want to talk with the, at least the, or, if not the three, at least the one that.
Yeah, or, or maybe have a subset of the board, two of us talk to.
Yeah.
The, the.
I kind of like to see the whole, the whole board. I, I like when you have, you know, they come and they do these dog and pony shows. You learn so much from that. I'd rather have the whole board learn the same thing at the same time than one or two of us.
Yeah, okay.
Like a bit different.
So tease those up, if we can tease those in.
Fight, but what we did for the Massa Plan, you were in that.
No, I went on that.
That's what we did, yeah.
Comparables for the, the, any town. Small towns that have an HR company.
Yeah.
I don't know which towns it are, but even that would be.
Yeah. Um, all right. Uh, Luke, I think we're.
Yeah, no, just to kind of piggyback what David was saying, you know, if we did bring in a consultant, a high-level consultant, to come in and say, an HR consultant, say, yeah, these are the deficiencies, this is where you really need to focus, this, you know, so, you know, we, we get that overall picture before we even hire anybody, right?
Yeah.
And maybe we can start chipping away at some of the stuff, but, but it's kind of the idea, you know, I, actually, when you said, you know, they don't have a dog in the fight?
Yeah.
I actually really like that, because, because, yeah, it gives you that, you know.
Kind of like an audit, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, right? And it gives you that unbiased view of, you know, this is, this is where you're really deficient, this is where you're pretty good.
Yeah.
You know, and you kind of fix it, so the person coming in doesn't come into a train wreck.
That's true.
Not that it's a train wreck, but you know what I mean?
Yes.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, some of that has already been done.
Right.
Understanding, yeah, the needs. So, how would we pursue finding a consultant that wants to do a?
You can shop.
Shop around, okay.
You have to squeeze every little drop out.
Yeah.
We have like four months to do that.
Right.
We got to really, really.
Remember what we did to Priscilla.
Oh, gosh.
That's right, yeah.
No, but, I mean, all, all kidding aside.
Where she was saying, I don't want to step foot in this town at all.
Exactly. Tim has forty years of municipal experience.
I know, you do.
Yeah.
Let's leverage the contact.
Okay.
This was the original reason, in fact, that I was advocating for an interim, because I didn't want to have to, have somebody have to fill his big shoes.
Um.
Now five minutes ahead of schedule.
Okay. So when we get to looking at the draft agenda for January eleventh, let's see if we want to put this on there then, or when we need to wait.
I doubt you're going to get feedback that early.
I know, with the holidays, yeah, so, let's just think about.
I think what you're going to need, my friend, is a full hour of pickleball.
Me personally, you mean?
No.
Oh, 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 for that. I thought you meant I need to go out and play pickleball.
Well, that, yeah, that you can do too, that you can do too, but I'm going to, I think.
Yes.
I think we're going to want.
Yes.
Since it's the second of two, and some people can get on.
And we're going to have some other people here, yeah.
And who's going to be, I mean, you need to give it time.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to ask.
Yeah.
Do we not have a town of Carlisle job description for a town administrator? That we had to use Ashby's?
We do now. Yeah. The, the one that is in your pack is actually the original that was done as part of the wage study in two thousand and one.
No, it says town administrator, town of Ashby.
No one picked up the typo until, you know, this week.
Back in the fifteenth when you were hired.
It says town of Ashby, is that the one?
That's the one, yeah.
That was used for hiring you?
That was, that's the one.
That should have been the leading indicator for you.
That's right, I, I don't think I saw that at first.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
But Jen revised it today, and we changed select board wherever it was.
Oh, okay.
And it says town of Carlisle now, so.
Now, Paul and whatever his last name is, Cynthia's husband, told me that there's nothing in the bylaw to describe. Anastopoulos, thank you. There's nothing in the bylaw to describe the town administrator?
That's true.
That's true.
True, it's just, it's just a reference to general laws.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, so we're done on this item, correct? We can move on. All right. So, appointments and resignations. Now, I know there was a new housing authority member that you wanted to.
Yes, the Housing Authority would like Vertide Neptune. She recommends her appointment to the, sorry, Housing Trust. Thank you.
You put them on the Housing Authority, they're lonely.
Oh, right, sorry, is that what I said?
You said.
Oops.
That's what you said, yeah.
Okay. And has, is it a man or a woman?
A woman.
Woman. Has, has she expressed interest in serving?
She has, she has. I sent the, the thing to, I sent the email, the one-line thing, that saying that she was interested. I sent it to you tonight.
Yeah.
Just so you know. And she visited our last meeting and also expressed interest in. We, we invited her to be a member, and we told her that we would like to, recommended her, that we would like to recommend her to the Select Board, and we would let her know.
All right, would you like to make the motion then?
I would. I'd like to, I move that we appoint Vertide Neptune to the Housing Trust for a term. It's a, forgotten now, was that one or two-year terms?
She's still best three years already.
This is, so it's a two-year term. The two-year term ending in twenty twenty. Or, then, twenty twenty-four. Okay, is there a second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All righty, that's, I will let her know. Great, welcome. Any other appointments? All right, well, let's move on then. The town administrators' report, Tim.
Okay.
Is that in the packet? No, it was not in the packet.
I don't think I saw it either. The town administrator report?
Yeah, we're missing like a few sections.
Wasn't in the packet?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
In either of the packets.
Yeah, nor the appointment thing.
Well, the appointment thing was last minute.
It wasn't yet, that wasn't available.
Very last minute, but.
But I can, uh, I can still get, yeah, I can still get, the, uh, all the boards and committees have been notified, the deadline for submission of warrant articles is, uh, the board's January twenty-fifth meeting, uh, based on the, uh, town meeting date of Monday, April twenty-fifth, at, uh, six P.M. But the moderator's confirmed he's good with that date and that time, and the school, uh, has reserved the auditorium for us.
Excuse me, could you repeat that? I, cause I, I heard January twenty-fifth, so.
Yeah, that's the, that's the deadline, by which board.
Oh, that's a deadline for the warrant.
Submit a warrant article.
And when is the town meeting then?
April twenty-fifth, Monday, April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth, yeah. Twenty-fifth is town meeting at?
Six P.M.
We're gonna move it, yeah.
Earlier start, and Wayne is okay with that.
Right, and warrant?
In the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're shooting for the auditorium, yeah.
February twenty-fifth.
But, uh, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Nope, that's fine. And so I, I attached the, my report, we've got, we've got a list of the likely, uh, warrant articles, uh, the first fifteen or so of the, the annual. And re- re- recurring articles, uh, that are on every year, and then the, we've got about ten or, uh, so, more speculative articles that, uh, were more optional as far as the board adding them to the warrant. And they're saving a spot for the town governance task force, if they have something, they may have something there, also the master plan implementation committee. And I'm expecting one from, uh, County Carlisle, um, regional school district, the capital project for the access road, I think that's coming.
Yep.
And, uh, transferring Dingham Road tax parcels to the housing trust, or, or to have a chat for humanity. I mean, these, these aren't definitely going forward, but there's something for the board, uh, to consider, and this is the way we kinda keep track of what's out, out there, what people have talked about, at least as a, kind of a notion of something they might submit, but we'll know by, uh, January twenty-fifth. There are actually articles, uh, uh, there.
Um, I would like to, um, raise for us as a board right now, just to see if we are interested in this, we don't have to make the decision tonight, but, um, you know, at one point, we were all supportive of the idea of the town clerk becoming an appointed position.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know in speaking with the couple of people from the governance task force, they are gonna recommend that. They would love it if the select board just already decided we wanted to support that, um.
We were waiting for them, that's why we didn't put it, because we said.
Anyway, they would love to have that just be a, on the warrant, and I guess the only thing would be, um, checking in with Peggy. I just wanna, yeah. Had you talked to her in the past about it?
In the past, we had always said.
Do you wanna do that?
I can do that again, but I wanna make sure I know what we're, we're gonna say.
Yeah.
I mean, in the past, we have said, uh, we'd like to put this on the warrant, but it would only be, come into effect when you decided you didn't wanna be, uh, clerking anymore. But do we really, do, if the governance committee is recommending this, do we wanna have that proviso on? Because there, it makes some report, reporting, again, you know, that silo business. Who does she report to? Didn't answer to anybody, right?
She isn't, she's elected now.
If she continues as an elected physician.
No, right, but you're right, we, governance has taken that on, they're gonna look at.
Well, but they're already, they know they weren't gonna recommend that we go to a appointed town clerk.
So, but then, that, that means that she would have to reply, immediately reply, apply for her job. Um, now, I, I just wanna be careful about that, you know, that.
Well, no, it doesn't mean, it could mean when her term expires, he just, yeah, having a salary, or, or, or somebody else, right?
Yeah, what did we determine, Tim, was the right process on that, cause I, I remembered the.
She isn't elected.
She isn't, no.
Yeah, the, you know, what, uh, what we had discussed the last time with the previous, well, two town clerks ago, was that, that person would stay in the position. Right, and then ultimately, I mean.
That was Mary, yeah.
No, before Mary.
Oh, you, oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Charlene.
Charlene, right? They, they would stay in the position until either, you know, other grounds to terminate, or they decided to retire, right? We, we didn't.
As an elected official?
No, 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 it just changed from elected to.
And this is what we had discussed with Peggy too.
If the people have voted a person in for a term, can you, you know, literally say, no, sorry, I'm.
I think they'd, I think they'd serve out the remainder of their elected term.
Yeah.
And then at that point, you just wouldn't elect a new clerk.
Right, you could do, right.
Yeah, but the thing is, that it was a kind of a matter of job security, that they, they would stay in their job, they, they, they stay in their job, but just not as an elected person, and, and the question is, is that still how we feel, I, because I didn't wanna tell her that, if that's not how we feel.
Yeah, no, I, I think it is, I, cause I.
Fair thing to do.
And then that, and then she, that, that position then, once it becomes an appointed position, would then, we would just make clear who that, who that position reports to, and also they would fall under the same sort of evaluation process that everybody else does, right?
Right, yeah.
So that layer, governance should take on, because the, to me, the only reason to have an elected clerk is the independence reason. Overseeing elections, blah, 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 can't be, you know, under, like, and, and therefore, who that person reports to becomes important. If it's the select board, which itself is an elected body, that's a measure of independence. If it's inside, say, the town administrator's hierarchy, that's a level of dependence. I would like the governance committee to not just say we don't like it to be elected, but go the next layer and say, okay.
Where do they fit into the organizational?
Because of that, in, that, that's the only reason, yeah, because in other ways, it's stupid, right? You can only hire town people, you're gonna, that's the reason that they always say, well, you know, I need to be independent, cause I'm, uh, uh, overseeing elections and things, I can't be pressured by. You know, it's like what's going on in the country, right? You want the legislator to, you know, like, these election officials, so, they need to take that, if they're gonna come up with a recommendation. I don't know how we communicate that to them, but.
So I'm having my interview with the, with the chair.
Right.
Next week.
All right, good, there you go.
Pass that on to her.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, in other towns have appointed ones, so, so obviously, there's a structural thing.
It's not like out of the realm, but, and we should, they should find that out, one of the constables.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but anyway, so that, all right, so.
I will not talk to Peggy until you talk to government.
Yeah, okay.
Well, cause the other piece too, though, is, I mean, it seems like it, you could be brought up on like wrongful termination, right, or, or if, if you, right, say, oh, well, we're gonna.
You wouldn't undo the election, you wouldn't.
No, 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 but even, even afterwards, it's like you're trying to squeeze somebody out. You know, I mean, I don't know, that's illegal, or that's a, that's a labor thing, that I just don't know.
I don't think we're gonna, it's gonna come to that.
No, I, I don't think we're either, but I'm just saying, it's, you know, one of those things, if you don't wanna put yourself into that.
Right.
Potential, yeah.
Yeah.
And also I could.
As you say, we'll jump off that bridge when we're coming, yeah, we like jumping off bridges. What else you got, Tim?
I'm only doing it.
Are there any other questions about the warrant article? I mean, we'll talk about them all on January twenty-fifth.
Right, yeah, right. I, I do wanna mention one other thing on, sorry, but the master plan steering committee is working really hard to finish up their plan. Uh, you know, it, because they report to the planning board, um, and the planning board chair, Madeline, has suggested that we do a joint planning board, select board.
Yeah.
Meeting to have the plan presented.
Yeah.
But then, uh, the planning board expects there to be parts of the plan that go out to different committees and boards for input. But meanwhile, there's some things in the plan that I think right off the bat, the planning board and the select board would probably approve that may involve a warrant article, and my question is, do we have some flexibility about that deadline? Or can it be as something as simple as a, a placeholder for, you know, a warrant article from the master plan?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the board's warrant, and you can do, what, you, you can certainly, so, it's a placeholder, but just need to have language for that by March fifteenth.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking, all right.
When you close the warrant.
That's a month.
Close the warrant, you have a month.
A little, yeah, so the select board is comfortable with that.
I do like that idea of, on the, on, on your list, uh, putting master plan articles, governance committee articles.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's a spot on there.
Just so that we know that.
Right, those are potentially, yeah, coming.
So Barney, when, when do you think that joint?
Well, we're gonna discuss that when we look at the agenda, which that's not in here, is the draft agenda for January eleven in here?
No.
Cause I didn't see that either.
It was in the, in the report.
In the report.
Anyway, Tim, why don't you finish?
Didn't get the report, and you didn't get the agenda, but, uh.
So why don't you finish, Tim, your, and then we'll, we'll come back to that meeting date.
Okay, uh, just an update on the assessors, uh, department, they, uh, have been advertising for a principal assessor for a number of weeks. They've received a number of good applications, they're interviewing, I think, five candidates in the next, well, some this week, and, and they feel very good about, uh, being able to recommend a candidate, uh, by mid to late January, is what Ken Marcello, uh, said, you know, we could. Candidates with good experience, some are assessors in other communities, and, uh, they're interested in moving to Carlisle. So the, uh, the notion is that they'll fill that position, and then they'll work on filling the administrative assistant position once they have, uh, they've made the new hire. In the meantime, uh, they're gonna be filling in, cause there'll be no one in the assessor's office after this week, uh, for, for a few weeks. They've, uh, they've got a senior volunteer to kinda handle the traffic, uh, the messages in and out of the, uh, the office, uh, some of the, uh, members of the board are coming in during the week to perform certain tasks, and, uh, they'll just kinda cobble it together for a, a period of a couple of weeks until they get, get someone on staff, uh, there, but, you know, they're encouraged by the application, and, uh, you know, we'll see what, uh, what happens, they'll be short-staffed, you know, for a few, few weeks, but it's also the period, I mean, the, the big crunch was setting the tax rate. Now, January, it's mostly applications for abatements, and they, they more or less take them in for the whole month, and they don't act on them until afterwards. So it's, it's kind of a slow period, if you will, in the assessor's office, which is good, since they don't have any staff. All right, uh, then, any questions on that, or?
Well, I, did you help them with the, you know, with the advertising and, have you been?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and I guess I, I'm gonna go back to the DEI, do we, do we have a DEI policy of, you know, kinda maybe looking to.
Diversity and.
Diversity, inclusion, and equity, and all that, for looking for more BIPOC, uh, candidates, and.
I have a, a more basic question, cause I know firms like mine are subject to review by EEOC, you have to actually show that you, you know, you evaluated candidates fairly, is there such a thing on the municipal side?
Well, the, I mean, the, I, I think there is, but I don't think we've ever been, uh, audited, or, you know.
If you ever are, at least in the private sector, you have to actually show.
Be able to demonstrate, yeah.
That you, you did that, so, anyway, I think it's all stuff that the HR person.
Again, that's the kinda thing, I, that's why I'm anxious to see us, um.
Right.
With this going.
And so the candidate, they, the, uh, the, the timeline, if it all goes well, would be to have a candidate to recommend to the select board.
Mm-hmm.
At some point in January.
Right, cause you're, you're the hiring authority, they're not the hiring authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, mid-January.
The hope will be sometime in January, yeah.
Yeah, that's their hope.
And then, and whatever candidate, that person would then still have to give notice, right? If they have a job somewhere else right now.
Right, they, yeah, if they're currently employed by another community, it could be, yeah, it could be a few weeks longer than that, yeah.
Yeah, it could be into February or so, all right, but you think the arrangement with, uh, senior tax worker and, um, board members coming in to help out will be able to manage the abatement process?
I think so, yeah, I think they will.
Okay.
It's the board that acts on the abatement, so they know what, you know.
Okay, so they know what they're doing on that, yeah.
Those.
Okay.
Okay, um, then I wanted to bring up, uh, I think you attached the packet, I hope you got the copy of the memo from the Board of Health announcing changes in their office hours. Do ruin increased workload due to COVID, and the changes in office hours, you know, weren't discussed in advance with this board or with myself, as I think they should be. And I thought the board might wanna discuss, you know, with the Board of Health, or any other boards, you know, what the procedure should be for making changes in the, the public hours, and I, I think there should be a consistency in the town hall, I mean, I'm not minimizing COVID at all, but I think.
And making it less hours?
Yeah, they're.
They closed, they're not in, on Friday.
And they're.
Is it just Friday?
No, it's more than that, well.
It's, it's.
Yeah, they closed altogether.
This is an old one, yeah, but it's.
It's, um, yeah, it was.
What do they do now, what do they?
Well, there's a difference, yeah.
So please be advised that the Board of Health is changing its public hours in order to provide better service to its customers.
Better hours, better service.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but, due to its continued COVID response activities, the health department can no longer support drop-in visits Monday through Friday. Not only does this result in taking requests out of order, but it can interrupt important COVID website meetings and trainings. The board will also be taking all requests in writing or by email, so, so there is.
How do you make an appointment, you have to request one?
You have to, apparently, email.
Yeah, right, it says general information requests, right.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know that they can, how can they unilaterally do that?
Well, exactly.
Yeah, that's the point, there might have very, there might be valid reasons, but you, you just can't.
Just unilaterally decide, well, this is the one to town hall departments, which is a little different, but it's basically got the same information.
But, but.
And then.
Did they send one to the public?
No, no.
No, no, and then.
I think we gotta talk to Tony.
Yep.
Well, and I'll tell you, I did, Tim and I had talked about this earlier, and I did reach out to Tony, and he's not responded.
Well, see, and I sat in on a C A, Board of Health meeting this.
Last week, yeah.
But I didn't know this, I mean, I would've brought that up, I think, it was, I want, I.
Yeah, well, this was, this was dated December seventh.
But never, you know, it wasn't on any agenda, and I just listened to it, and I.
Public meeting?
So I think, you want me to reach out to Tony?
Sure, yeah, cause you're the liaison to the Board of Health.
Can you send that to me, cause I don't have any of this in, in the packet?
Uh, we got them both, but yes, I, or actually, Jen, can I ask you to send copies of those two different memos to David? Cause I'm not sure I can put my hand, cause one went to, I think one went to the select board, right, Tim?
Right, or maybe to me, but, uh.
Just went to you, and you forwarded it to us?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
And that was the sort of external one, and then there's this department heads memo, right, two different notices.
Send those along, and then I'll, I'll write, I'll write.
That would be great, that would be great.
All right.
Um.
What else?
Uh, we were just gonna talk about the agenda for the eleventh, I don't know, well, I don't know why some of the packet came through and some of it didn't.
Yeah.
Picture of it?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the agenda.
The older one had, um.
No, no, it wasn't in my packet either.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's the most recent packet, but the older packet.
The older packet, right.
Now it's all aging, I mean, it looks okay.
Maybe, right, cause there was so much in there, yeah.
It looks like we got most of that.
Oh, since that, I wanted to talk about too, because that has to be sorted differently, that.
Well, let's do, let's do that outside the meeting, that can happen outside the meeting, but, um, um, Tim, let me just think, was that it? Yeah, um, oh, I'm, sorry, I'm jumping back, but warrant articles, you have the survivor health benefits thing that we have to put on?
I do have that on there as a potential, yeah. I do have that on there as a potential, yeah.
You have that, okay, great, great, okay.
Yeah.
With, um.
And the pickleball is on there.
With the police chief fires, all of that?
Ah, let me, yeah, I have, I have a report on that, which, or we can use, maybe kind of do it together, but, okay, so. Victor and I have had several conversations about where things are in that process. And Victor and Kate have been doing some work separately with the chief, but also met with the two officers, you know, that had written about their concerns about the part-time position. And so, um, the conclusion is that, uh, that the chief would like to be on the next agenda to talk about how he wants to move forward with a sort of internal problem solving group. Victor has agreed to, not as a member of the Fintcom, but just as somebody who's had a lot of experience in his corporate work, doing this kind of internal problem solving, sort of facilitate a discussion with some of the, representing different points of view from the police department and the chief, and see if they can't brainstorm a way to figure out the, the issues between part-time and full-time and the overtime expense that we're incurring right now. And, um. So the chief would like to come talk to us about that at the next meeting.
How much time does he need?
Well, I don't think you need.
Pardon, will Victor be there too?
He, he can come if we want him to come, yeah. The other piece of this is that, um. Victor is talking to the finance committee about, and I think I'm okay speaking about this publicly. He didn't say not to, you know, we have two issues with specific, well, sorry, one issue with a specific police officer who is, has been out basically, you know, for a year, and that is contributing to the problem with overtime. And that, maybe, Tim, you're aware of this, I don't know, but there's a, a plan moving forward that has, that has been initiated to, that will allow that person to retire, the right word?
Because involuntary retirement is the term.
Yeah.
For specific reasons, yeah.
Right, and so that will take some time though, it's a three to six month process. And what Victor's proposing is that, um, Fintcom and the select board would authorize the hiring of a full-time police officer that would be taking that person's position. But that, that the hiring would be initiated next year, early next year, still in this fiscal year, because it's gonna take, I guess, some time to find the candidate. And that there, there's likely to be a little bit of overlap between when that current officer goes out on disability, retirement with disability, and the new full-time police officer comes in, but that Victor thinks they can find the money. And that then, that wouldn't, then for the fiscal year 23, there'll be the same number of officers. They just have a new person taking that.
Was that in addition to the one full-time that they did approve?
They haven't, they haven't approved any.
They're not approving any, okay.
Yeah, none of that.
And is this person a lieutenant?
Yes, no, he's a sergeant.
Okay, cause there's a lieutenant out on disability as well.
Yeah, but it's a different, it's a different situation. So, but the other piece too is, you know, there was concern about the hiring process as well, right? So.
Yes.
Cause didn't, was, wasn't there a labor lawyer involved with that or an outside firm?
Yes, that, and I don't know where that is, excuse me.
Yeah, no, cause that, that's just the other piece, right, before we agreed and having them bring, right? It's gotta be a clean, clear process.
I think, I think that problem solving should come first.
Yeah, do you know where that process is, where the Labor Council was bringing in an outside person to investigate the complaint?
I, I know that the investigation is underway, that, uh.
Yeah.
The chief interviewed with the investigator today, so it's, it's moving forward.
Yeah, and that, hopefully that will also be completed before they have a problem solving thing. And they should probably have that guy in the room.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's total, I think the, am I right in thinking that the person that's coming in as a labor investigator, or whatever the right word is, following up on the complaints, those are specific complaints that he's following up on. And they're not the same as what the part-time police officers were raising. Am I correct about that?
He, he's gonna look at that, that issue, but that's not the main focus.
I think it's all interwoven.
It's all interwoven, yeah.
Okay.
It's probably a half an hour.
That's a message back though to John and Victor to make sure it's integrated with what this outside.
So they should both come and they should, we should plan a half an hour so we can.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's that update. But we also had, um, did you wanna say something about the, oh, sorry, before we do that, the liaison to the Public Safety Facilities Task Force? So of course we've had, just, it's been really difficult trying to schedule that. And you may have followed that there's, because there are members from the Municipal Facilities Committee on this task force, and there's enough of them that they represent a quorum, that it has to be a joint.
When, when they meet, it's a joint meeting with them.
It has to be a joint Municipal Facilities.
So Kate's already liaison, so we're all set. No, seriously, she'll be there, right? She's on.
I'm not on that committee.
You're not on Municipal Facilities?
I'm on Municipal Facilities.
So we don't need another liaison if you're gonna be there.
I thought Nathan was the Public Safety.
Say it again?
I thought Nathan was the Public Safety.
I think he's willing to do this, be the liaison to this Public Safety Facilities Task Force.
Good, because I'm not ready to do any more meetings.
Yeah, okay.
You'll have to go anyway, cause you're on MFC.
No, she doesn't, I don't know, I'm saying there are two appointed members, Jerry Lerman and Christine Lear.
Bill Rizzo.
And Bill Rizzo, so those three are appointed to the task force by, they're already on. And because there are three of them, they represent a quorum.
All right, so.
So they could still hold a joint meeting, but all the other members of the committee don't have to come.
Don't have to attend, ah, so you're not coinciding the meetings.
No, 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 yeah.
But how exactly, I mean, we didn't have to have a Board of Selectmen meeting posted when we were the Housing Trust.
Well, Leo, you wanna say what Tom Harrington's?
Was it because it's so similar?
You was on that?
Maybe we were doing it incorrectly.
I didn't ask them that question, but that's, I guess that's a similar.
Oh, well, I, maybe, I asked Tom about that, or I can't remember how, I thought I saw some, I thought, well, anyway. He said that because the job descriptions, the charges of the two groups have a lot of overlap.
There's over, okay, that, that makes sense.
The reason it has to be considered a joint.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't, that's why the other, yeah, okay.
Yeah, trust and Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so let's have a motion to appoint Nathan, who's not here, who's a liaison. Or do we have to do it that way? No, we haven't done, we've just, we're agreed that we will support Nathan.
You agree, he wants to do it anyway.
Yeah, I think he, I think he does, I think.
You know, I think that's right, okay, great. And then, um, uh, did you wanna ask for somebody to participate on the Housing Trust HPP review?
Housing Trust, uh, HPP, Housing Production Plan, um, is getting underway. And we thought we would do it with a subcommittee and MAPC said, you know, you really need a committee. You need representatives from a DEI group, from planning board, from select board, from, um, I forgot where else. Anyway, so I've gotten everybody except for a select board member, so I'm asking for, and, and it can't be me, because I'm the chair of the.
And what's the do, what's the job?
No, the job is to read whatever the materials are that MAPC writes and comment on them and, you know, have discussions about them. And I don't think it's a terribly heavy lift, I might be, you know, totally out of my mind.
When is it?
Um, well, our first meeting is Tuesday, the 28th.
No, but you have to go to the meeting or you just read the stuff and comment?
No, no, we, well, we're gonna have to have some meetings, you know, to have those discussions.
About what's in the plan.
About what's in the plan.
How big is the plan, like, big thick thing or?
Well, you know, it's, it's gonna be a fairly big thick thing, and there will be some outreach, so somebody will have, during the outreach, will, whoever's on that committee will have to be an ambassador for the plan and for, you know, reaching out to.
Reaching out to whom though?
To the town, to the townspeople, townspeople. Yes, well, you know, we might be, you know, having focus groups and.
So what, what is the timeframe of that activity?
I hope I'm ready for a town meeting, so it's.
So some recommendations are gonna come out of it, the town meeting?
Uh, well, we hope to get it all.
Just a report that's presented and approved and accepted, I guess.
Yes.
So the report came from a third party?
The report will be written by MAPC, really.
We will look at it and reach our conclusions and then socialize it with townspeople.
Exactly, that's more or less the job.
But what is it, a housing production plan?
Yeah.
Why don't we just accept the plan and you have the third party?
Yeah, I mean.
Why, why do you need all that other input?
Yeah, I, I think you start getting town input on that, man, holy Jesus.
Well, no, you have to have it, you have to have it.
Why, we've never gotten town input before.
That's one of the reasons why we've never been very successful with our housing production plans, because they've been written without any input. And then I wonder why people don't want.
They would have gathered the input to write the report.
Well, that, yeah, exactly.
Well, that's, exactly, that's what we're doing.
Because MAPC doesn't do that, this committee has to do that.
The committee, MAPC will run the meetings, like they did, the MAPC did like for them.
Municipal vulnerability.
For the vulnerability, and then you, the, so the.
So they haven't yet written the report?
No, but they've written a lot of it.
Drafted, and then they have the meeting, and then they incorporate the feedback into the final?
They, all we have is a scoop of work right now, they're, they're doing the background material now.
Right, okay.
And then they will take input from the town.
So, all right, so they do get input before they write the report?
Yes, absolutely, yes, yes.
So what does this liaison person have to do? Just make sure that the.
It's not a liaison, it's to be a member of the HPP writing committee for the Housing Trust.
Why, wouldn't that come out of the Housing Trust people?
It's coming, okay, because MAPC thinks that they, there should be representative from the select board, one from the planning board, one from, um.
I, I honestly, we got so much to do and it's being covered, I gotta push back on that.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine.
In my opinion, people in the Housing Trust should participate, and if you want a citizen volunteer, get one of those people. But we've already authorized the Housing Trust, and it is mostly, I mean, it used to be.
Just me at this point.
Okay, so, but you don't need to do that, just authorize somebody in the Housing Trust to be on that.
Well, if you, if we write a, a plan, I think if the Housing Trust writes a plan that there's, nobody on the select board has been involved in, and.
I will sit in on meeting, I'm okay sitting in on a meeting, but I don't wanna drive, I don't think we need to drive it.
You're not, I'm not asking.
Yeah, like.
I'm not asking the select board to drive it.
No.
Sign me up, sign me up.
Sign Nathan up, he's not here.
I, I could do it, I mean, I, you would prefer not to.
I don't, I'm so strapped, I'm so strapped tight, I don't wanna add things, but, I mean, I, that's why I'm challenging.
Yeah.
I don't wanna shirk the responsibility, I was just told them up and I'm, you two, I'm sorry, you two have the heaviest liaison load.
Hmm.
You know, I'm trying to be, but I mean, I've, you know.
Yeah, but I'm retired.
I know, I know, and your kids are out of the house.
And my kids are out of the house, yeah, so I'm not driving kids to school, you know, so.
I'm at the edge of my volunteering ability.
Yeah, and, and.
Don't take it on, don't take it on.
I'd rather people didn't take on things that they can't do, honestly, I really, I'd rather have nobody than somebody who's too strapped and can't do it.
Right.
Who doesn't want.
They don't do it well, but you do.
I don't do well, but I do.
But I, I will participate, as I can, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Um, then, uh, uh, okay, I had written a note to myself, David, and I'm not quite sure why.
Oh, I know, because you were at the Fintcom meeting Monday morning, so.
Somebody was supposed to send me the link. Oh boy, another link issue.
I wrote to Scott and asked him to send it to you and he never got it.
And I meant, I never got it, and then I meant to ask him, and then I got home and I forgot.
Ah, okay.
So I'm sorry.
You know why? Cause you got too many things on your plate.
I do, I do, I mean, I took my.
I couldn't make it last night, so I'd asked David to fill in.
I picked up my son from basketball, I took him to soccer, I took him back from soccer and I went.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Had a martini and I was, there you go.
No problem, no problem.
I'm sorry, I, I meant.
That's okay.
I was then gonna write him today to say what happened, but I.
That's okay. We heard at the Finty meeting this morning.
Yeah.
Jim Dar was on that.
Yeah, their guidance letter will go out this week.
Right.
But she told us that.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a guidance letter, I had been under the misapprehen, misunderstanding that it was actually suggesting a percentage, but it's not, right, it's, the guidance letter is just.
It was under 2.5.
Yeah, but just telling each, uh, each department what their, what their.
Yeah, what their, yeah.
What they were budgeting for them, right, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, I think then we are, unless there's, anyone else have a liaison report they wanna offer?
I'll get the request for CPC applications out this week.
Okay.
Later than usual, but.
Yeah, okay, be sure to send one to the trust.
Yeah.
Be sure to send one to the.
Yeah, no, we've been waiting for the updated numbers and everything, but yeah, the state match was like 32% or something.
Oh, wow, that is really good.
Yeah, like 170,000.
Good, so, yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well.
What's the match?
It's like 32% or something, yeah, 33, 7, it's somewhere in the 30s.
They were promising to, to beat it up and.
Yeah, so it's, so it's a nice match.
Yeah, that's good, that's good news.
When we started, it was 100% match.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's cause not so many towns were in on it too.
Well, yeah, yeah, sometimes it was like 19, yeah, but then they started pulling those funds for other things, that's what, that was the big kicker.
Yeah. Um, all righty, uh, well, that's great, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, well, let's do the minutes. Oh, wait, 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 we gotta look at the draft meeting for January 11th. So we don't, um, we, let me just, I see already some notes here from David, but what we've got on it, and we don't have, we can figure out the timing, but we've got on it the continued discussion about the pickleball proposal. Uh, and we wanna make sure, we're gonna put it in for an hour, make sure that Drew is here and also, who else? Oh, and, and Tom Harrington, if we can. What do we have, the council on aging, they wanna give us a quick update on the senior tax program. And then the transfer station task force, yeah, is, is ready, they're gonna send you their, tomorrow morning, they're, they're voting, I think, on the final report, and that will be coming to you. We'll try, they, they wanna try to get it to us earlier than the normal Thursday before the meeting, cause there'll be lots to read through. But I, I think you'll be interested in the work and pleased and the work that they've done and what they're proposing. So then we wanna put in time for Chief Fisher and Victor to discuss what, what's happening with the police department. Let me just see if I, I thought, did I bring my January 11th draft?
I was just thinking it might, because of, to be courteous to John.
Yeah, well, remember we promised, no, we're gonna keep the pickleball conversation at 7:10, it's gotta stay there, so he could follow that. He could go right after, yeah, he'd have to sit through the pickleball.
Oh, he'll patch back in.
Oh, I know what I wrote on my version is, okay, the COLA conversation, that's what you and I need to report on. So we, Tim organized a meeting of the finance chair, vice chair, David and myself and Jim O'Shea, is that right? Oh, and Jack Huntress from the school. And so we, we have a whole bunch of material that, that Tim provided on the, and, and this can, we can send this out in advance, right, of our meeting on the 11th.
I'm gonna send those a memo to the board before our next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, you'll have this to look over, but we need to decide what we're thinking about for the COLA.
Did I get a copy of that, since I was not in your meeting and, but I am on the negotiating team?
Sure.
I'd kinda like to.
Or here, you can take mine if you want, and, and then, Tim, you'll just send a cover memo to all of us. So we should add that to.
You're pretty packed here.
I know, I know, um.
Something I have to give on that.
Yeah. Well, we've got the timing on this, so we've got, um, 20 minutes for appointments, I think, I, we're just gonna have to pare this down. We've given 45 minutes to the transfer station task force, we may have to.
Make it 30, yeah, right.
Yeah, anyway, that's our job to figure out.
Yeah.
But don't you think, or do you think we could wait till the January 25th meeting on the COLA or?
I don't know, I don't know, I guess personnel, you're, you're stepping in in the place of personnel.
Fintcom needs to know, right?
They need to know, but they, I think they, they sort of know what the.
I don't think it has to be a long drawn out thing.
No, I think it could be 10, 15 minutes.
I think, I think we should do it, I think we should do it.
They can do it in my report, you know, you can all do it separately, but, yeah.
I, I think we should do it.
All right, good, um, I just reminded me there's something else to go off. Okay. Um, anything, but anything else, uh, oh, oh, anything else on the agenda for the 11th? Here, you wanna look at this?
No, it's.
Nope, okay.
Yeah, I, I, my screen just.
I'm done, okay.
Stick a fork in me.
So the, the one thing I, I've forgotten, the liaison report is, so the, the joint meeting with the planning board and the master plan steering committee, I mean, sorry, and us, the planning board and us, to hear the presentation on the master plan. So we, in my, in conversations with the planning board and the master plan, originally, we were gonna do it that week in between the January 11th and January 25th, but a consultant to the master plan group has been out, just sick as a dog for the last 10 days. She does have COVID, her whole family got COVID, and her kids are fine, and she just got really sick, so put her back, um, some time. so, put her back, um, some time, so they would like to suggest, and they're gonna talk to the planning board about this, that, let me just pull up my calendar, that we go with a meeting that is, unfortunately, it's gonna be the following week, the week of our regular select board meeting, the week of the 24th, and.
Would we have a special meeting?
Right, so in addition, it needs to be separate, I think, from our regular meeting, so in addition to the meeting on the 25th, they're suggesting that they're hoping they could have a joint meeting scheduled for the 27th. And obviously, that's a Thursday, and so the select board, I mean, the planning board has to be okay with that as well as us, so.
Question is, are we well to start with?
Right, are we, are we up for doing that? You know, we, we could push it into the next week when we don't have a select board meeting, particularly if we're willing to be flexible about the warrant, you know, what, what needs to come in.
Well, the 25th is the warrant meeting, right, so you're saying it would be like the 31st or 1st, or whatever, Tuesday?
Well, if it, if it was the following week, it would be, uh, um, February 1st.
Why don't we do that? Two meetings in one week.
I know, it's tough.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I can do that on the 1st. I think, you, you okay with that, Luke, on the 1st, then, Tuesday, the 1st, would be our suggestion for the joint meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, huh?
Okay.
It could be travel, but, yeah, no, that's fine.
You don't know what the momma's thinking.
Yeah, exactly.
You're planning to advance.
I will go anywhere I can, you know.
Okay, uh, I will communicate.
As long as it's a Tuesday, it's fine.
Okay, I'll communicate that back to, um, the master plan folks and the planning board.
I just moved it off my.
You just what?
I just took it out of the 27th and put it on it, because it's clearly not gonna be on the 27th, then.
Correct, okay, all right, I'll, I'll keep you posted, okay, all right, I think we are ready, oh, for minutes, we gotta go back and approve the minutes.
It was, uh, Mostello, that was a Mostella at the bottom of the page, but that was the only thing I saw.
I sent, Jen, I sent you a few minor corrections, not worth mentioning.
All right, any other comments on the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes, uh, as presented.
Okay.
Subject to minor corrections.
It's edited, then.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, um, and then there were the free warrant articles that I signed, the warrant, expense warrants, I think, payroll for the town and school, another school expense, and then a town expense, $293, 292,000. Nothing unusual, okay. I think we're ready to adjourn, it's 9:54, oh, there's somebody, a number of people are still online, thank you all for, um, continuing to, um, listen to our select board meeting, and, um, we hope you have a good night and a great holiday. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move.
Any conversation about that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.